Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Our first item of business is the invocation, and I will ask Councilmember Thompson to deliver it, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we are so, once again, amazed by how blessed we are in this community, for many reasons, for many things, so blessed, in fact, that we often neglect to realize that you've been better to us than sometimes we've been to ourselves. And as we conduct the people's business here today, we pray that we do so with wisdom, maintaining a sense of proportion. We do so with the heart of a servant, recognizing that we are here not to be served, but to serve, and with humility. And if times arise tonight where some of us may disagree with one another, and that will likely happen, in fact, it's healthy, we pray that we remember, in those instances, that the people in this room, all of us, were fearfully and wonderfully made, and that all of us are in one way or another neighbors whom we are called to love. We give you all the praise, and we give you all the glory. Amen.
Now, will everyone please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss Sins, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Drucker.
Here.
Councilmember Naklis.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Grateful to be here.
Councilmember Victor.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda, Mr. Brown?
No amendments this evening.
Thank you. Then we'll turn to the review of the minutes. We have the workshop meeting of January 27th and the regular meeting of January 28th, 2025. Are there any corrections or changes? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve both sets.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We'll now turn to proclamations, and we have a proclamation for 2-1-1 Awareness Week, so I'll invite Patrice Schroeder, Community Relations Specialist with 2-1-1 Palm Beach Treasure Coast, to step up to the lectern, and I'll join you there as we read the proclamation.
Whereas during challenging and uncertain times, 2-1-1's highly trained and accredited staff continue to be frontline responders available 24/7. And whereas 2-1-1 is a central access number where individuals and families, people of all ages and walks of life, can find lifesaving crisis support, guidance, and hope. And whereas people have expressed growing struggles with mental and emotional health, addiction, and the ability to meet their basic needs of housing, utility payments, food, and other concerns, 2-1-1's caring staff listen to each person to provide available resource options and help them strategize and problem solve. And whereas 2-1-1 has specialized advocacy and support programs for the community that include caregiver support, Help Me Grow, elder crisis outreach, and 2-1-1's lifesaving Sunshine Daily Calls for lonely and isolated seniors and caregivers. And 2-1-1 also responds to 988 Lifeline number and support lines that include first responders and My Florida Vet for veterans with peer-to-peer support and assistance for those specialized groups and their families. Now therefore, I, Scott Singer, Mayor of the City of Boca Raton, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 11th through 17th, 2025, as 2-1-1 Awareness Week in Boca Raton, and urge all residents to be aware that if they are overwhelmed, in crisis, or just need to talk, that 2-1-1 is available any time of day or night.
Again, my name is Patrice Schroeder. I've been actually with the agency, I'm going into my 19th year, and I'm very passionate about what we do. This awareness time is a time for us to share the information, because there's so many people out there that just do not know that 2-1-1 exists. So we're that central hub of health and human service information. A person could be struggling with food, they may have a child with a disability, perhaps they have a senior in the house that has Alzheimer's. We also help them find those mental health providers. Right now, we average about 350 calls per day. Twelve of those, on average, are a suicide concern. So our, the people in our community are struggling with their mental health, they're overwhelmed, and you know, we're here for them any time of day or night. They can simply dial 2-1-1. We also have a support line for veterans and for first responders also, because they're in the thick of it, and we want to make sure that they can have that peer-to-peer support, we not only help the individual, but also their families as well. And of course, our Sunshine Calls, there are so many isolated seniors out there, they can get a free daily call to check in on their well-being and just to say hi. So we have so many great programs, and I also wanted to take a quick minute, for those of you that are interested in supporting our event. We do have an event coming up March 1st, it's Meet Me in Casablanca, so we're taking that old-time theme which people love, and you can go to 211palmbeach.org to learn more about that. But I want to thank you, I know you have a big agenda, and I could talk for hours, but that's not going to happen, so thank you so much. Just check out 2-1-1 and share it with anybody that you encounter that may be struggling.
Thank you, Patrice. We really appreciate you and all of your colleagues. 125,000 calls every year, thank you for being there for our community, and I think that deserves a round of applause, so thank you. All right, that concludes our proclamations for tonight, so we'll turn to board appointments. We have one board tonight for which we're interviewing applicants, the Permitting and Construction Review Board. Are either of the two applicants who haven't interviewed yet here? Yes, both of you are here, so please come forward, come to the lectern, give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes to why, on why you want to serve.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alejandro Bellini. I live at 9713 Boca Gardens Parkway, Unit 8, in Boca Raton, 33496. I've been living in the greater Boca Raton area for over nine years, and I'm applying for a position in the Permitting and Construction Review Board. A little bit about me, I graduated with a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering with a focus on power systems from Simon Bolivar University in Venezuela. I also hold a master's degree in energy management and energy auditing from Madrid Polytechnic University in Spain, and a master's degree in engineering management from Florida International University. In addition, I am a certified energy manager, CEM, and a certified wind building engineer by the Association of Energy Engineers. I also hold a state licensed, I'm a state licensed unlimited electrical contractor and a state licensed professional engineer. I have worked in the design and implementation of commercial residential electrical systems, dealing with alterations, remodels, new construction, and code violation remediation. I have also been involved as the electrical P E for several inspections and certifications of buildings related to the Broward County Building Safety Inspection Program. I would like to serve the board and the citizens of Boca Raton and assist in the resolution of any matter in my area of expertise.
All right. Thank you very much for applying, we're happy to have you. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Barretto? All right, thank you, and please come forward.
I'm William Kramer, I reside at 301 Northwest 22nd Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. Some of you might remember me as the Assistant Building Official for the City of Boca Raton back in 2004, 2007. Currently, I work for the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'm the Chief Structural Building Inspector for Fort Lauderdale since 2017. I want to serve the board because I feel like you might need a diverse board, somebody with a direct construction-related experience, perhaps permitting. I do, I'm in charge of building, plan review, and inspections for the city of Boca Raton, so I have some experience in that. I actually have a degree in fine arts from Colorado State University, so my approach is building is more of an art than a science, so I think diversity, I might add some diversity to the, to the board, if appointed, again. I've got a US GBC Lead AP, I'm a state-certified floodplain manager, and I'm a member of the State Association of Floodplain Managers, as well as the Florida Floodplain Managers Association. And I, basically, what I do is I pick up the phone and solve problems most of the day, and do some plan review and, and help with the inspection process as well. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Mr. Kramer, I have one. We also just had a spot open up for a structural engineer, I don't know if, would you deem yourself to qualify for that? I guess it would require a state license or certification in that?
Absolutely not. No, I have qualifications as a certified general contractor, a plans examiner, a building inspector, and a building official certification.
Thought so, just making sure. Well, it's looking good for you anyway, so, very good. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So councilmembers, we have one applicant, finally, for an electrical engineer and one vacancy for that, and we've got two openings for at-large general contractor, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
I would like to appoint Alejandro Bellini Barretto to the Engineer Electrical, Nicole Flyer, at-large GC, and William Kramer as at-large GC.
Very good, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll give that to Mr. Victor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you all for your interest in serving, and if you know now a structural engineer, please let us know. We finally filled the electrical engineer spot, but if there's structural engineers who want to serve, or you know of any, please ask them to serve. Thank you. That concludes our board appointments. We'll turn to responses to workshop information requests, I believe we had none.
None to this evening.
Thank you, so we'll turn to the consent agenda. Would any member of the council wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, would any member of the public wish to comment on the consent agenda alone? We will a public comment on all of the other items. This is just for the consent agenda. I see no one coming forward, so we will close the time for public comment on that, and we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then Miss Sins, please call the roll.
Drucker.
Yes.
Naklis.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Singer.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. We'll now turn to resolutions and other business, and the first item is our government campus partnership opportunity. So I'll turn to you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik, our deputy city manager, who's been shepherding this project since the beginning, will give us an update on where we are and where we're headed.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown. Steph, if you can pull up the timeline, please. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. So, obviously, the anticipated action you're going to take tonight is an important milestone in this process that we've been going through. The mayor and I talked about, you know, next steps and what we wanted to, you know, chat about, so you have two major milestones after tonight's decision. You know, one is an open house that's going to be conducted by the highest-rated proposer. The intent behind that open house is to allow the public to understand what's in the proposals and have some conversations with the development team, as well as provide both the development team and the city with some feedback in terms of their impression on the proposals. The next major milestone will be the consideration of an interim agreement, which essentially is a non-binding agreement with a selected developer that'll essentially lay out the roles and responsibilities for each party as we're going through the drafting of a longer-term development agreement. In between those two milestone dates, we have opportunities for public comment, so February 24th, February 25th, and March 17th, all dates where we don't necessarily have those milestone activities, but there are opportunities for the public to comment and give us feedback on the project at that point in time. After we get past that March meeting where we anticipate approving an interim agreement with a selected developer, we'll have plenty of opportunities for continued public feedback and engagement with the development team as we're going through that, that plan. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you in case you had some comments.
Thank you, and just, thank you for highlighting that, as, after we have the preliminary group, we're still going to have a lot of public comment, and then over the ensuing weeks and months before we reach potentially a final agreement with the potential chosen proposer. All right, very good. Mr. Brown, we, could you just give a recap? You gave a good one yesterday. We had more, more softball participants yesterday, but I think it's important just to give a recap on all the recreational updates, because there's some good news that people would want to hear.
There were, there was some confusion in the public, and I think perhaps some misinformation about what's going to be happening with the recreation and related facilities that are on the City Hall campus property right now. With regard to the Children's Museum, it is not being razed, it's not being destroyed. The singing pines and Rickards House are being moved to Meadows Park, and that will probably happen towards the end of this calendar year. With regard to the skate park, we are working with the Beach and Park District to find a new location for a new skate park. It will be more state-of-the-art than the skate park we have today. With regard to tennis, we are, there will, there, there may be facilities downtown, but there may be facilities other places in the city, but the tennis courts that we have will be replaced, if not enhanced. Then with regard to softball fields, we're working very closely with the Beach and Park District to site three, perhaps four softball fields, and necessary amenities, including parking. We are looking seriously at Sugar Sand Park and coordinating with the district to bring that to fruition. Those fields would be in place and in service before we take out the fields at the City Hall campus in Memorial Park. That's update on those facilities.
Thank you, any questions? Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Mr. Brown, and I'm assuming this is on the FAQ, if someone, if I'm a, if I'm a resident, which I am, and I'll say, what is going to happen to softball fields? I would like to see something pop up on our website that'll explain, to explain the process of what we're going to do with what you just said. I think the more we communicate with the community, the better it's going to be for everyone, because there's so much misinformation, and our job is to educate the community and keep them at ease, that we're not taking away facilities, that we're replacing them, that we're doing it in a timely manner with a process in place. So I would like to see something where, if I go to www.myboca.us and I put in softball fields, it pops up. If I put in the tennis courts, it pops up. Some easily accessible information, I think you and I spoke about this with one of the questions we had on fluoride water, not related to this project, please don't email me, we do not have fluoride in our water. It was a question that a resident had, but I didn't, I was, I know we didn't, but I didn't have the answer. I would like for, be able to put it in a search and provide that. So I think that the more we communicate, and I understand we have this FAQ, but that's a very lengthy document, we should have just links to some of these, like, very quick answers that, we're not tearing down the library, we're not doing this, like, just quick and easily accessible to the residents.
Very good. Yes. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, at this point, then, we'll open up the public hearing, we'll take public comment first. I've gotten a number of cards, if you want to speak, you don't have to submit a card, but if you do, that way we'll have it and you'll be in the queue. Please give your name and address when called upon, and you'll have three minutes, and please do keep your remarks to three minutes, because there's a lot of people who want to speak. I'll call people three at a time. There are some seats in the front row, if you want to come on up, so you don't have to stand that whole time, or if you're about to speak, you can take one of those, too. At least, there seems to be one open. I don't know if that's being reserved, no, that gentleman is nice enough to move it. All right. John Blunk, Romina Braun, and Ariana Kuria, or Kurcia? Pardon me. Thank you, Kuria. It's a long R, thank you. Please come forward. Name and address, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Romina Braun, I live in 591 Northwest 13th Avenue, 33486. I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed project in downtown Boca Raton. My husband and I moved here 12 years ago from Denny Beach, drawn to the charm of Boca and its family-friendly environment. We were looking for a community with great schools, safe streets, and plenty of open spaces where our children could play outside. After carefully consideration, we chose to make Boca Raton our home, despite the higher mortgage, because it offered everything we wanted for our family. Since then, the city has grown, some will argue, too quickly. The traffic has become unbearable, and while our kids no longer ride their bikes in the street like they used to, we continue to appreciate the benefits this city offers. But then, but this new project threatens everything we value about Boca. It risks changing the identity of this city and the sense of community we work so hard to build. The project will eliminate crucial public space in downtown, increase traffic and the associated dangers, put overwhelming pressure on our police, fire departments, and other public services, and overcrowd the schools that are already at capacity. I want to believe that this city council listened to the people who live here, and I can tell you that more than 70% of Boca Raton residents oppose this development. We don't want to lose the public spaces we hold dear. Many of us would support a referendum to leave a say in this decision. If feel as tough, the council has stopped prioritizing the needs of its current residents, and instead is rushing to transform Boca Raton into a city that no longer reflects the values that make it unique, turning Boca Raton into a Miami-like city, beating five minutes, where no one wants to live. They promised new spaces elsewhere, but where? When? And who will foot the bill? We heard little to nothing about our concerns will be addressed, concerns that impact our daily lives, our children, and our safety. I ask the council to slow down, take the time to listen to us, communicate transparently, be accountable to the people who call Boca Raton a home. If this project moves forwards, I want to at least acknowledge terror group who have shown some understanding of our community. Their proposal with this increased green space seems to be the most thoughtful approach, and I believe is a step in the right direction. Lastly, I want to address an issue that has come up recently. Why are people from Fort Lauderdale and Delray Beach coming to our workshops and waiting in on project that doesn't directly affect them? Is discouraging to see non-residents who don't pay taxes here and have no stake in our community getting involved in decisions that will impact our lives? If they feel so strongly, perhaps they should ask their own city councils to approve the developments they want. Delray could easily give away the old school square, and I bet Fort Lauderdale still has a part that they could there down. Please, city council, listen to us, the people who live, work, and raise families here. We want a Boca Raton that remains true to its roots, no one that sold off to the highest bidder.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, we often say this, or I say this, meetings, you feel free to applaud, but sometimes people's feelings get hurt when you applaud for some people and not for others, so it helps move things along if you, not everyone applauds every speaker. Thank you. Oh, welcome.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak, even though I'm just a kid. I have a couple of questions for you about some of the changes happening in our city.
That's fine, but could you please share your name?
Ariana.
Ariana Kuria, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry. First, where are you planning to move the softball fields, skate park, Children's Museum, and other important places? These places are really important for the people who want to have fun or stay active, and I'm curious where they will go. Second, why are you moving the police station to Brick? I don't understand why it has to be moved, and I think it's important to know how this will affect the people who need to visit it. Third, why do we need thousands of new apartments in downtown? If we build 2,000 to 8,000 new apartments, that means there will probably be 10,000 more cars in the downtown area, making it more crowded. If we are moving all of these things to Brick, why not build the apartments there, too? It might help keep the downtown area less crowded. Finally, if you say this plan is for the next generation, I am part of the next generation, and I'm not sure I want these changes. I think it's important to keep asking questions and making sure the city works for everyone, especially the kids that will live here in the future. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you. And by the way, I'm glad to see so many new residents here, including, thank you, Ms. Kuria. We don't answer questions usually one by one, because it draws on city managers taking notes. At the end of public comment, we'll respond to some of those factual questions, we already addressed some of the recreational ones. John Blunk, then after that, Chris Inman, and Colby Wolkeb, pardon me if I got it wrong.
Hello, John Blunk. I resided 2181 Regent's Boulevard in West Palm Beach. I'm the president and owner of TCRE, it's a commercial brokerage company. I have 20 years of experience leasing some of the best office projects in Boca, West Palm Beach, and PGA. I am the local office broker for Related Ross in West Palm Beach, and part of the team in the last five years that's transacted on over a million square feet of new-to-market office deals. And these office deals have come from cities like New York City, Dallas, Boston, and now from California. And it's important because we think there's going to be a tech presence in Palm Beach County, and Boca Raton has to get ready so they don't miss this tech run that we think's going to happen. My brokerage team and I lease many Class A office buildings in Boca Raton presently, notably Two Town Center and One Boca Place. In the past decade, we've leased Boca Center 1, 2, and 3, One Town Center, and I've leased Meisner Park. That represents really the entire Class A subset of existing office space in Boca Raton. And unfortunately, those buildings are all 30 to 35 years old, and they're rendered somewhat obsolete by new-to-market prospects who need better infrastructure, they can't put their offices there. So Boca needs that. Why has Boca Raton largely been passed over by the new-to-market tenants? Well, you had West Palm Beach, obviously 360 Rosemary, One Flagler, and now 10 and 15 City Place has the best new office projects in all of South Florida. You also had Fort Lauderdale, which the developer developed the main there, and that was very successful, captured a lot of new-to-market tenants. And you had 830 Brickell in Miami that was also built or being built at the time, and they captured their fair share of new-to-market tenants. A good example I want to reference is what happened in 2021. Goldman Sachs was in the market in South Florida for 50,000 square feet. They didn't know where they wanted to be, whether they want to be in Miami, Boca, Fort Lauderdale, or West Palm Beach. So Stephen Ross and Ken Hemel called the CEO, who they know, David Solomon of Goldman Sachs, and said, "Come down. We'll meet with you, and we'll provide a market tour of all these markets in South Florida." So we did that. They flew down. We hopped in a Sprinter van, and we drove to Miami, and we toured Miami. And we stopped in Fort Lauderdale. And then on the way back, something happened. Goldman Sachs said, "Hey, we love Boca. We have a lot of our executives that live in Boca. We love to look at office space in Boca, but Boca doesn't have any office space that meets our criteria. We view those office buildings as obsolete, so we don't need to stop in Boca." So we continued on to West Palm Beach, and we ended up meeting in West Palm Beach, and Goldman Sachs took 50,000 square feet.
Could you conclude, please?
Can I complete?
Could you conclude your time? Yes, please.
Oh, yes. Okay. So anyway, the deal went to West Palm Beach. Boca did not have a good base of existing products for Goldman Sachs to consider. Is that it? Thank you.
Chris Inman, Corey Wolkeb Wolheb, sorry, I can't read it, and then Gary Anker.
Good evening. My name is Chris Inman, 931 South Palm Way in Lake Worth Beach. I'm the general manager of the Hilton West Palm Beach, which was developed by the Related Companies, now Related Ross, over eight years ago. Over that time, the hotel has helped define West Palm Beach as a key convention and business district. The hotel's central location next to City Place, directly connected to the convention center, hosts visitors from around the world. In fact, we've been so successful, we're now developing another 400-room hotel due to demand. Our hotel stands out for many because of the commitment Related Ross has to building top-quality amenities that establish a sense of community and bring people together. We host over 500 community events annually to encourage neighbors and visitors to eat, drink, and relax in a lush tropical setting. We encourage our guests to come and stay with us and to live like a local. Unique in my experience, Related Ross believes in keeping our hotel in top condition, continually reinvesting in product upgrades to divine luxury in our unconventional convention hotel. The high-quality product allows us to partner with other properties, such as the breakers, as well as financial and tech companies, to host business and leisure travelers. A similar partnership with the Boca Resort is easy to imagine. I believe in Related Ross's vision for our communities. They create spaces that bring people together and establish strong ties. I'm honored to represent our 250 hard-working team members whose careers have been built upon Related Ross's commitment to creating vibrant, welcoming communities. This is a project and a hotel the city can be proud of. Related Ross knows how to combine smart retail, dining, living, and office space into a community that will allow locals and visitors to thrive. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Colby Wolleb. I live at 3319 Deer Creek Alba Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33486. And I am a business owner here in Boca Raton. The Blueprint Cookie's off Military Trail. And I grew up in Old Floresta behind the proposed area. Prior to opening Blueprint, I had the unique point of view of being a youth basketball instructor in the area for about 10 years, my brother for about 15 years, who is currently the head coach at a local school. None of these kids come home after school. They go to prestigious schools, coming out of North Bayard Prep, St. Andrews, Boca High, et cetera. And the jobs they all line up are not here. I also made a list of my 12 closest friends. Not one of them has moved back here, and none of them currently live here. In fact, the only, the main reason I moved back was to be closer to my family. We do not currently have a downtown. I've lived here, I've lived within Boca or within five minutes of Boca for almost all of my 35 years. And if you ask me where downtown Boca is, I could not tell you. This project would not only attract the young grads back, but it gives a new, exciting areas for young families to enjoy. I fully endorse this project, and I look forward to taking my niece and nephew to the new development. Thank you.
Gary Anker.
Gary Anker, E-N-K-E-R, 7746 Solomar Circle, Boca. Thank you for your service, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and esteemed council members. It's a difficult job, and you're doing an excellent job. And I emailed this information to you, but I'm just going to highlight some of it. I've lived in this incredible city for over 30 years and have served on my community's HOA board. I was informed by neighbors that the city of Boca Raton was about to make a big decision that will change the downtown area for decades to come. I have come here tonight on behalf of the residents with questions after reviewing and watching the January proposals. I'm sure that many other residents will share these same concerns. One, I have reviewed the financial data available on the My Boca website. It appears as though the net present value of the Terra Frisbee proposal approximates 150 million, while the Related Ross proposal lists a net present value of 170 million, which approximately is 13% greater than the Terra Frisbee plan. But the Related Ross development calls for 2.3 million feet of private, non-civic-use space, which is 57% greater development and density than the Terra Frisbee calls for, which is 1.4 million of private, non-civic space. So with that said, Terra Frisbee is offering the city more for its proposed development on a square-foot basis. So concerned residents do not understand why the Terra Frisbee plan would not be a clear choice. Second, has the city performed a traffic study to understand why Boca would be different than any other downtown districts such as Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and West Palm Beach, which are all struggling with major traffic congestion due to overdevelopment? Let's address these issues proactively while they are still preventable. Does Boca really need an extra 725,000 square feet of commercial space to add to the congestion, which is as proposed in the Related Ross plan? Let's leave these downtown congestion issues, let's leave those downtown congestion issues for other cities to worry about. It's hard enough to find parking in downtown Boca as it is. Why do we need another to add 57% greater density and congestion, especially when Boca has the ability here to build something with a lot less intense and less density, while at the same time still providing a similar financial benefit? And my time's almost up. Let's see. Does our downtown commercial district really need three 20-plus-story office buildings versus two eight-story, six-to-eight-story buildings in the Terra Frisbee plan? Thank you.
Preston Hoover, Jonathan Ungian, Martin Arivo. Any of you wish to speak? Mr. Ungian, I see you. Mr. Hoover, oh. And then Mr. Arivo.
Hello. My name is Preston Hoover. I live at 4545 Brandywine Drive, 33487 Boca Raton, Florida. I'm currently enrolled as a freshman at Spanish River Community High School, and I previously went to AD Henderson Community High School. There, I achieved many awards, one being a drone competition placing first place in the world, another being a sea perch underwater robotics competing globally, winning fifth in the world. But this conversation isn't to talk about my awards. It's to talk about the lack of job opportunities here in Boca Raton, Florida. Many talented people in Boca Raton, Florida, leave after college due to the lack of jobs here. Me, myself, I've tried to find a job. Even though I'm young, it's hard to find jobs here. Lack of property, real estate, all the above. A lot of people here, they do very well and successful due to how well-known they are and the connections they have. I think, well, in my personal opinion, I've seen a lot of my family members, such as my sister, do well here because of the connections they have with other people. I think, I think there needs to be more jobs in Florida to allow people with many talents, good education, to be successful in this area. I'm a huge Dolphins fan. Thank you to Mr. Ross for opening many, to opening many projects and opportunities here in West Palm Beach. And I think that you should bring the same job opportunities here in Boca. Thank you for everyone for listening. And I just, I think that, why wouldn't people want to make more jobs in Boca Raton, Florida, to make it a better place? Thank you, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your academic success.
Thank you.
Jonathan Ungian.
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I see two projects that are worthy of this campus, but I see one that's got a different vision. I've got zero skin in this game. I'm a commercial property owner. I hear from the mayor, meeting after meeting, about what does it take to bring good businesses to this town? How do we get an Amazon? How do we get an Apple, whatever it may be? And the reality that another person involved in real estate had stated is there's not good business, buildings for them to be in. And the reality is, is this is a prime spot to, and I heard another speaker talk about, there is no real downtown. To make this a downtown, to make this a spot where is, it's less populated, especially on weekends, nights, most people return home from their office space. So that traffic goes away then. But the reality is, when you talk about parking and you talk about the excess of 700,000 square feet, and you divide that by 300 square feet, which is what you need to park it, you're talking almost the same amount of parking as if you put an additional 1,400 apartment units there. So that's just the reality when you look at the numbers. So what is the best impact for this city? And I think it's not overpopulating more apartments in the downtown, which again, it comes down to supply and demand, right? So all the homeowners should want less supply. That makes your home more valuable. And you bring in good, top-quality companies, and you've got people that want to buy your home, that potentially work in the area. I think it's exactly what this city needs if they are to do something. The one caveat, I believe, and I've heard time and again, and I understand from looking at previous projects, is that Related doesn't sell. So I think that that kind of true partnership, if there was maybe a covenant, you know they're not going to leave their building empty. You know they're going to drive good businesses to this town when they're vested in that. So like I said, I think that there is a great opportunity to drive growth, good businesses, high-paying salaries to this city. And I think it helps the city as a whole. I don't look at them. My building's right across the street. What happens over there isn't my competition. But if good businesses come here, that could certainly have an effect on my property and tenancy in a positive way, not in a competition way. So I hope that you all think about those things and make a good decision for this city. Thank you.
Martin Arivo, and then Vic Rose, John Schwartz.
Good evening, Martin Arivo. 2739 Northeast 15th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Heard a lot talked tonight about scale of these proposals. And I just want to stress that, you know, the importance of any mixed-use project. You know, scale is a concern, but one of the key aspects of any project is the quality of execution and the proven track record of the developer to operate similar facilities and product types. And I'm here tonight to support Related Ross. And I asked the council to pay close attention in their selection to pick a group such as Related that has longstanding operating history and with projects that only get better and better over time. And I think that this, this city deserves a group, again, as we've heard, that has a developer that will be here for the long run and provide the city the longevity that they deserve for a project that's special. So I thank you for all the hard work you've done. Boca Raton's a beautiful city, and we love spending time here and want nothing but the best. And I can provide unwavering support for Related Ross. I can tell you that, you know, no other developer anywhere in the United States has the reputation of this team, you know, personally have experience in retail real estate for 23 years in mixed-use development and placemaking, and have seen firsthand the impact that Related Ross has on communities with their attention to detail, design, and their ability to attract world-class tenancy, office, hotel, residential. And wish you all the best in your decision. It's a big decision, and we know we support Related Ross. Thank you.
John Schwartz, Lorraine Blank, Alexander Garcia, please.
Hello. My name is John Schwartz. I'm a resident of Boca Raton, 260 Northwest 19th Street. And I grew up in Boca Raton in the 2000s when the Omni, Spanish River, and intended Benetton is real. So I moved back here like three years ago, and I love Boca. And I think this project has me in a really weird spot because we do need new offices. But I think public awareness for this project is low. So I think, to what you said about communication, let people know this is happening so people don't feel surprised. I think I've talked to 20, 30 residents. Maybe three out of 20 know what's up. Then from a development standpoint, you know, I think the scale of this project is on scale. I think the 8,000-person project is out of scope, obviously, for our capacity. As a city, you know, we have 100,000 residents. With the west suburbs, maybe 250,000 residents. But why can't we do this throughout the whole city? Why can't we have an arts district near FAU, a science district, whatever it is? But maybe the scale of this is a little too big. That being said, I do think everyone I talk to does not want congestion. And I know we're trying to do bike lanes, which kind of ad hoc. I think we need to have solutions for our current development issues. Businesses are closing in the city. I don't think anyone's surprised by that. We're in a recession. So something like any of these proposals will help spur the local economy. But I would just say, let's spread the development money. Sure, this is a good project. Whatever happens, I think the parties are actually doing a good job. You know, we want green spaces. How do we get more green spaces? How do we get more culture without alienating the existing community? Because I don't want other residents to feel that Boca is no longer the place they love. So that being said, my name is John Schwartz. And this is a conversation, but the public does not know this is happening. And my perspective is at least slow this process down even further because you're going to get more pushback. And I, and I think this train's going, so this proposal's going to go. But just involve the community more. That's my perspective. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
And Mr. Rose, I'd called your card before, and then I moved it over, so you're next, if you like. Yes, you're free now. You're up now, if you like, so.
My name is Vic Rose. I reside at 285 Northwest 9th Street in Spanish Village. That means I live within blocks of this project, and myself and my neighbors will experience the most impact on what will be built there. Terra Frisbee offers the least amount of impact, offers the most benefits for downtown residents to enjoy. Related is a great company. Have done great things in LA, Chicago, New York. But Boca's not at New York or LA. Related's vision for this space is not the vision for those who live there. Yesterday's Related supporters yesterday all remarked that we... Yesterday's Related supporters yesterday all remarkably had similar points, like they all got the same email, the same talking points, suggesting it was a coordinated effort. Not one of them expressed an authentic comment or passion toward this project. Did you notice not one of them brought up one element of the project? You know why? Not one of them know a damn thing about this project. They just know Related. Actually, I overheard one of the Related supporters in the hallway. No one told me it was going to take this long. That doesn't sound like the words of a concerned resident of downtown. Definitely not the words of the Spanish Village residents that have sent you letters and are here today to support Terra Frisbee. To be honest, I compared their supporters yesterday on behalf of Related to a restaurant owner asking all their friends and family to give them a five-star rating on Yelp. Related could have saved us a lot of time yesterday, and just had one person speak, because they all said the same thing. How many times did you hear the words Manhattan, Hudson Yard? Related supporters had no genuine concerns for Boca Raton's unique needs and wants. Their only passion was for Related. Related's past success in other cities do not guarantee positive outcome for Boca Raton. Moreover, the emphasis on their size of wealth is misleading. Even the wealthiest individual companies make mistakes and fail. Related should have shown us a plan last night, but they didn't. I've seen what they can do, small is not in their vocabulary. Remember, when someone tells you who they are the first time, believe them. Terra Frisbee proposal has been consistent from day one, coupled with their proactive outreach to Spanish Village, demonstrates a general commitment to understanding and addressing our concerns. Related did nothing to court Spanish Village, the neighborhood that would be impacted the most. Terra Frisbee, always focuses on the needs of Boca Raton's residents, where Related has always just boasted about all their projects. I would think you would prefer to work with a company that presented a reasonable, realistic proposal on the outset, like Terra Frisbee, rather than the one that initially inflated demands to see what they can negotiate down to. I don't want to see Manhattan reflected in my kitchen window. Before you vote tonight, I want all of you to close your eyes and pretend you live in Spanish Village. I do not, if you do, I don't think you want to see Miami or the New York skyline outside your window. If you don't, you must vote for Terra Frisbee. All Related talked about was their size of Related, and how much money they have. Remember, David defeated Goliath. This proves the size doesn't guarantee victory. In the last comment, they were boasting about their ability to get Hilton. I'm in the hospitality industry, and I've already talked to two, some of the biggest hospitality companies in the country, and they can bring Terra Frisbee, Hilton, Marriott, or any flag they want. That's not a difficult thing. So, that's the last thing. And one comment, I guess, somebody talking about bringing Amazon and Apple here. There's not, there's not enough space in downtown Boca for what Apple and Amazon would want. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate all your hard work on this effort, and I hope you make the decision to select Terra Frisbee, because that's what the immediate neighborhood wants. Thank you so much.
Lorraine Blank, Alexandra Gar, Alexander Garcia, and Jorge Garcia.
Hello again. My name is Lorraine Blank. I live at 545 Northwest 7th Street. I've come before to you previously, and I've written letters to all of you. I think you've received them, because I've gotten response, but I pass them around anyway. My neighbor and I, who couldn't be here, we canvassed approximately 50 of the neighbors in Conference Lake Estates. A handful of them knew about the project, only about two were in favor of it. We understand that you are going forward with it, but we'd like you to consider its scope, and what the community, the larger Boca community wants. So, I passed around, I wanted to give you a bit of a reinterpretation of the community survey. I don't think that the summary did justice to what people were saying about the community, and how it relates to your project. So, very quickly, I know statistics are hard, forgive me all of you if I read some of the numbers, but what people like in Boca, this is their community survey statistically supposedly representative, the overall image and reputation, 90%. Overall parks and recreation, what we like, 92%. The overall appearance, 82%. The shopping opportunities, 86%. The overall variety and quality of businesses, between 81 and 84%. The overall design and layout of residential and commercial, they like, 84. The overall quality of the natural environment, 72% are happy with the vibrancy of the downtown area. So, I ask you, if you're possibly responding to a problem that's not defined in the same way by the majority of your residents, what they're not quite so happy with, that is the design and layout of some of the residential areas. What the, the, the overall quality of development, 53% only like what you're doing, okay, with development. They're unhappy, 37% are happy with the well-planned residential growth. That means the majority of people in this Boca who responded to this survey are not happy with the way you're planning development. They want a better quality of life. They want the overall appearance of Boca to stay the same. They want the importance of focusing on layout and design. They want the preservation of historic things. They're not particularly concerned with the quality of affordable housing, which you keep pushing in your proposals. The project has been planned in the absence of a strong mandate for you. You need to consider, when you're designing something that will change our communities and our lives, that they don't consider you to be particularly honest and transparent. There's only 61% of respondents who think that you're honest and responsive. They don't have confidence in the government, only 61%. 58% say you're not acting in the best, feel you're acting in the best interest of the community. The 53% like the overall direction. Overall quality is 53%. They're not, the majority of people are only slightly, the majority, like what you're doing. You have to respond to the others. Read the survey, please.
Your time has expired.
I know your time is limited, and ours is also. Please, other people went over. I'm just asking you to consider what people have been telling you, and to consider the size and scope, and the future of Boca.
Alexander Garcia, and Jorge Garcia. Oh, George, sorry.
Alexander will not be speaking. I accidentally filled out his card, because he wasn't here. So, my name is George Garcia. I'm a resident of Boca Raton, 1240 Pepper Ridge Terrace, in Camino Gardens since 1987. Furthermore, I am also a practicing architect in Boca since that time. Interestingly enough, my office is in West Palm Beach, so I know a little bit of both areas. I'm here to support the Terra Frisbee proposal, but I do want to make it clear, because I heard some terrible statements about the Related group. I think that, that, those are not necessarily correct statements. Those are, that's a great group, who do great work, right down the street from me. Not with me, but they do a great job of it. And so, one of the things that I wanted to express is, knowing the nuances of both locations, the city of Boca Raton is, is, requires a tremendous amount of sensitivity, that I think the Terra group has inherited in their proposal, in terms of the, the scale, particularly in its inclusivity, and, and, and non-barrier type of development with, with all the surroundings considered, the, the smaller-scale spaces, the height, the densities, the connectivity, everything you ask for. I did criticize one thing a while back, when I first heard you all talking about this project, which was, that I, I actually made a statement that you were selecting a conductor to the orchestra without having any sheet music written yet. Commissioner Thompson clarified that by saying, well, we're going to try and pick a dance partner, and then we're going to pick the music. So, I'll buy that, because I think you're still quite a bit from achieving final programs, and how many hotel rooms, and how many square feet of offices, and how many units of living spaces, I think you're going to get involved with that, almost on a design, trial, and error basis, as unfortunately happens many, much in, in our industry. But in terms of my support, from both a citizenship level and a professional level, Terra is the team. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, will anyone else, I saw another card. Anyone else from the family? All right, very well. Rudy Havelka, then Mark Jacobson, and Juan Caicedo.
Good evening. Let me start with saying, I have a suit on. I do not have a favorite in the, in the fight, so to speak. I don't know anybody on either side. I really wanted to, I think it's-
Name and address, please.
Rudy Havelka, 850 Northwest 3rd Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida, in Spanish Village. So, I'm about a quarter-mile tops of walking to the very development. And I think if I represent anybody, it's, it's the people of Spanish Village. So, my wife Diane, sitting right over here, I think like many people in our community, very uncomfortable to come up here and speak their opinion, right? So, they're, they're hitting you with cards, the people who are comfortable, the people who represent the developers. So, you're hearing from, I think, a lot of those people. When it comes to the community, I have two boys that were born in Spanish Village. We have been there 29 years. We, on the ballfields, I taught them how to play baseball. On the softball field, I taught my nieces how to play softball. My kids grew up to play baseball at Boca Christian, right down the street. We homeschooled our kids, along with, there's probably about five or six other families right there in that same community, and we use the community center for co-ops. We would use the library regularly to go down and teach our kids. We have a party every year to go down and see the parade. I know this community, and so do the people who live in a community with me, better than anybody else. When you look at the development, if I had a choice of no development, fix up what's there, I would love that. I think the, the train has, so to speak, left the station, and in that case, I think you got to look at Terra Frisbee. It's, at least, you can swallow it. Like, it's got 1,000, 1,100 new residents is a lot of people. Right now, in that area between 4th Avenue to First, Glades to Palmetto, you have 332 homes, I think I counted. Call two cars per house, that's 664 cars, right? Now, 1,100 residents, you got 2,200 cars now in that area coming and going, plus office space. The thing I would add about the office space is, I, look, my two boys, one had to move to Wilmington, North Carolina, because he couldn't afford a place, and the other one moved to Boynton. His wife's a teacher in Boca, he's a firefighter. This is, it's just what it is. Nobody is going to work downtown and live downtown unless you moved here 29 years ago, like me, and bought your house for $86,000. The same house that I bought originally would be torn down, as a matter of fact, it was one that was just sold to be torn down, for $880,000. If we're, I'm in banking. I love commercial. But that needs to be kind of over here, off of Congress, technology way, build up that spot. People are coming and going off in '95, because that's where they're going to come from. They're going to come here to work, but they're going to come from Boynton, they're going to come up from Lantana, where they can afford to buy stuff. And they're going to come here to work, and then they're going to go home. That's just the way it is. So, if you guys have any questions, feel free to give me a call. And again, Terra Frisbee is who I'm going with. Thank you so much.
Mark Jacobson, Juan Caicedo, and Lauren Simovich.
Hi, I'm Mark Jacobson, 2300 Northwest Corporate Boulevard. Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Brown, council members. As you know, I've been the Community Appearance Board for 10 or 12 years in our city. I've constantly done community service, and I'm well-aware of the area that we're talking about tonight. I coached both of my kids softball and soccer at this very park that we're talking about. I spent every week for 10 years, two hours a night, in the community center. So, I'm very familiar with the area. One of the, I've been in Boca Raton, and lived in Boca Raton since 1996. In fact, I moved from Fort Lauderdale, when all my friends looked at me and said, why are you going to Boca? It's a sleepy community. People live there, but nobody stays there. Well, you know what? I came to Boca because of all the public open space, the parks that we have, the, the green space that's everywhere. The only thing I can say is, I speak with experience. Having worked in West Palm Beach, and having worked with Related Ross on placemaking, streetscape, public art, public plazas, every project we do, every project they do, has the same components. Always thinking about the community, always thinking about the neighbors. I've been on several, several community outreach programs, where we've talked to neighbors. We're doing projects with the CRA, Streetscape. And what's the first thing that happens? We sit down with the local community, the buildings that are adjacent to us, we explain what we're doing, and we move forward. It's always input. The only thing I can do is speak from experience, and having lived it and seen it from start to finish. Projects as small as renovating a historic home, turning it into a restaurant on a street, creating places that people pass by and stop and use. I mean, look, one of the things we're looking at in Boca is connectivity. I mean, how do we get from point A to point B? We've got Royal Palm Place on the south, we've got Meisner Park on the north, we've got Palmetto Park in the middle, and hopefully, we have an exciting new opportunity for a new public-private partnership in this government center. And maybe, just maybe, with this, it'll, it'll be the catalyst to spur connectivity through our community, getting us from one side of the tracks to the other side of the tracks. From one side of Dixie Highway and Federal Highway to the other side of Dixie and Federal Highway. I couldn't speak more highly about being proud of what we've done, and what I've helped with, in, in the communities that we've worked in. And for that, I would strongly support. And I know with neighborhood sensitivity and community input, that Related Ross is the right team. Thank you.
Juan Caicedo, Lauren Simovich, and Audra Simovich.
Good evening, Juan Caicedo, 5516 Northeast 7th Avenue. I was here yesterday, and since then, I actually wrote an email to all of you, and I'm basically stating the same thing that I, that I wrote. And I think that it is important to understand that we're actually doing a significant project in the city, and the community that is most impacted by it has not been contacted for the most part. However, having said that, I think that the developer that, that should be working on this side is one that is actually sensitive to, to our, to the character and the scale of our city. And from the plans that I saw, and, and, and the, the open space that is provided, the public space that is provided, I think the Terra Plan is the plan that we should be working with. I was very impressed yesterday, actually, after you saw the video that we did as a group of Workshop 344. When I was leading the, the, the meeting here, somebody from Terra actually approached me, because they wanted to learn more about the, the, they approached the design of the street. They wanted to see if they could actually work with us to integrate some of that, some of those concepts into the plan. And so, I think that, that shows you that there is interest, there is, there is an interest from their, interest from them to learn about the community and to work with the community. I, I believe that the, the urban planning is actually a tough, a tough thing to do, and, and, and dealing with the edges of the downtown, or the urban plan is, is difficult. This happens to be an edge. This is, this is an edge that actually is, is transitioning between what could be a very dense project into a, pretty much a single-family residential to the northeast, northwest, and, and, and then to the, to the immediate west, is actually a couple of small office buildings in there. But again, transitioning to a smaller-scale development. Perhaps these office buildings that are actually being proposed by the, the Related group should belong in the downtown, in the, in the main street, on Palmetto Park Road, if you want to have density and not impact the real, the, the, the small fabric of, of the city. The other thing that I think is important is that, obviously, both plans will have to be studied and further developed, but I think the, the Terra Plan actually lends itself more to working with the open space that is existing, which I think is actually an asset to the community, is, is, is something that, that belongs to the community, the baseball fields, the open fields, the skate, skate park, they all are part of the community and landmark pieces to this, to this, to this community. We could actually frame them with this master plan that is going to be created, without having to remove them from, from there. The community should keep that space, and that scale actually will transition well into areas that I mentioned before, without, without really having to impose something so heavy on them. So, I encourage you to really look carefully into this, and the Terra Group, in my mind, is the one that is more sensitive, and more responsible in terms of the development for this, for this community. Thank you.
Lauren and Audra Simovich.
Well, I'm going to speak, Audra Simovich, 335 Thatch Palm Drive, in Boca Raton. Open, honest, and transparent. And I do not believe you guys have been open, honest, and transparent, because I didn't know this was happening until my sister just told me. This is very upsetting. What you're trying to bring in here with the Ross Plan is going to make more congestion. It's very interesting to me that the news doesn't even know that this is happening. Had you guys been open, honest, and transparent, I think more Boca Raton residents would be here as well. My neighbors don't know about this. I don't think we need more congestion here. It takes 30 minutes to get from five blocks on Federal Highway, when all the- It takes 30 minutes to get from five blocks on Federal Highway when all the snowboards, snowbirds come down here. We're actually happy when they all leave, all the, most of them aren't leaving anymore, because they've all moved from big cities like New York City down here to get away from, from what's going on up there. I, I think the Terra Frisbee Plan is probably more conducive to what we as a community want. I grew up in Miami, I actually moved back to Boca because it is a community. I don't want to live on Brickell. My daughter lives on Brickell. I don't even go visit her because it's ridiculous with all the high rises, all the people, all the traffic. It's uninhabitable. I mean, you guys are just trying to chase us away. Let's have something that is community-oriented for the Boca residents. We, we like our open spaces. I like to run down the street. I don't want to have a million high rises that block all the sun. You know, this, it would be nice if you guys took a pause and actually considered what the people of Boca Raton that live here, I know you have a lot of people from Fort Lauderdale and other areas, I mean, they're not going to be directly impacted, you have a lot of developers here, and that's great, I'm not against development, my son's in real estate development, but let's consider what the people want, and let's actually address and speak to the people, because I can tell you, most people in my neighborhood don't know that this is even going on, and it's, it's very upsetting. I know you, Andy Thompson, I know you, Mayor Singer, and I'm really, I'm really upset. I don't know if you can tell that from my voice, but I'm very upset that we weren't included in all this conversation until now. So let's take a moment and actually see what everybody wants, because I think we like our Boca Raton. We like the parade down the street. We don't want high rises. I mean, we just got all these new apartment complexes, all these new people are coming in. Where's everybody going to go? It's hard enough to find parking on the weekend. So let's, let's take a pause. Thank you.
Lauren Simovich.
I just spoke for her.
All right, thanks, thank you. Lucas Ross, Audra Sebo Quintana, and Jessica Grogan.
My name's Lucas Ross, 1255 Northwest 14th Street in Boca. Thank you for the time. A little background, second-generation native South Florida, lived in Boca since 2005, graduated FAU, work in aerospace industry, projects such as the Falcon 9, Giant Capsule, Mars Rover, International Space Station, JWST, satellite system, fighter aircraft. Sold internationally, which allowed me to visit to many, allowed me to visit many cities around the US and the world, and what I want to come back to is Boca, not because it's a large city, but because it's Boca. I'm now starting an aerospace company, and again, this is all happening while I live in Boca. I don't need high rises downtown to do this. A project this immense, where the city is turning over such a large core part of the city, emails, mailers should have been sent out. Missing communication seems to be very a big factor here. Most of residents, I've spoke to neighbors, friends, people at the skate park, even people that work there, people in the fields, no one knew about this. I just learned about it about a week and a half ago. I understand the business case, but would you, you'd see that same business case for something like Central Park, but are they turning over Central Park to be built? I don't think so. So, in Boca, we don't want to turn it into another Fort Lauderdale, Miami. This is what this plan does, but it's not what most people I've spoken to want. The parks and rec area is pristine, and it should be kept that way. Moving into other plant parks would just crowd other parks, and that doesn't help what we want to see here. Why not develop the facility, why not develop the commercial real estate that's already out there around the parks and tie it in to the main part of the city? The Office Depot complex is one. There is commercial land that can be developed, and you can tie it in in other ways. Once we move, we cannot go back. The land is developed, and the residents will never have this area again as a park and recreational area. The, and place will be buildings that will age and eventually be dated. Please don't take this hair, this land away. We do want our parks and rec area. I believe you should listen to the residents here. Thank you for the time.
Hi, good evening, Audra Sebo Quintana, 2809 Northeast 38th Street in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I think it's very interesting to, to sit here as what I would call myself and my family products of Boca. We moved down here in 1982, when a lot of tech companies, along with IBM, moved to what I guess now is being called the BRICS campus. And I would just remind everybody here of the power that the city of Boca Raton has to influence a community across South Florida, that's just Palm Beach, to Broward County, bringing jobs and young families. I'm also here as someone who has, my, my sister, her husband, and my, my niece and nephew live on Southwest 9th, so half a mile away from the project site. I go to the parks here with my four kids, so they can play with their cousins. I go to Christmas dinners here. I've gone to funerals at the Lutheran Church for family members. So, although I have a Fort Lauderdale address, I feel like I am a member of this community. We're here quite often, and we'll be here this weekend. In terms of the, the project proposals, I'm here to support the Related Ross project, and why? Again, I go back to 40 years ago, when Boca created this innovative campus, you know, it's been called T-Rex, now called BRICS. The type of development that Related Ross is programming is the future. Office space and, and office, the office sector now puts people first, meaning you choose where you want to work based on the quality of life, the proximity to parks, restaurants, retails, and I believe that the Related Ross program does the best to serve the community now and for the next 40-plus years. I think a lower-density plan is just more of the same, quite honestly, and I don't believe it's going to attract the jobs and the community center that Boca Raton needs. And by the way, it's not just for the residents here that live in East Boca, but these are also for the residents to, to attract the community that's also all the way out on Glazen 441 and the surrounding communities. So with that, I think an appropriate project to scale brings all the communities together, even though we may not all have a Boca Raton address. Thank you.
Jessica Grogan, Judith Morrow, David Williams.
Good evening, I'm Jessica Grogan, 420 West Royal Palm Road, Boca Raton. If you take note of that address, you will see that this project is absolutely 100% in my backyard. I am not a polished, paid speaker this evening, I am just coming to you as a Boca Raton resident, wife and mother. Wanted to let you know a little bit about me. My husband and I bought our house here about 13 years ago, and are currently raising our two little girls, very active in the Boca community and as well as in the Boca Raton athletics. My husband and I both do coach softball, and both of my girls are involved with our competitive and travel program as well. I do want to take the time to thank you guys for hearing all of our concerns regarding our athletic fields and preserving softball fields throughout the, the concerns with this project. I do want to bring up a couple of things. Again, as I mentioned, I do live in East Boca. I do consider there a downtown in Boca. We walk to it quite frequently. We dine and entertain and have fun in Meisner and Royal Palm. We walk to the beach, we walk to the parade every year. Notice, I do say, we do a lot of walking, because driving anywhere in downtown or East Boca can be hazardous and troublesome at times with the amount of traffic that we currently have. My husband and I are both self-employed, own our own companies here in Boca Raton, and also do have the privilege of being able to do those jobs from anywhere. I do think we're talking about bringing a lot of different businesses into this project. I feel like some of the things that are considered that most jobs now, people can work from home, they can work from other states, so keeping that into consideration where we don't need vast office spaces that are going to leave a vacant or empty void in the evenings while I'm enjoying my walk to Meisner Park, I would prefer not to walk through a bunch of high rises that are dark and dim. I would also like to bring up that because of my employment, I drive around Boca Raton and surrounding cities quite a bit, and I do see a lot of for lease, for sale signs in our local commercial real estate, whether it's restaurants, office space, I know there's some other construction going up near town center, off of military. My concern or question would be, are we considering the vacancies that we currently have in those commercial spaces, and maybe rehabbing those buildings and putting some funding in to make those more suitable versus building a bunch of other projects that will consume our downtown area? I also would really like to ask, I know my time is up, no one in the community really knows what's going on, and that has already been mentioned a few times. My request after tonight is to actually put a pause on your deliberation for this vast decision, and give the community more time to absorb, and then make an, you know, informed input on this decision. Thank you.
Judith Morrow, and David Williams, and then Nicholas Ferraro. Any of you can speak, some of you may have left. Come on up, Mr. Williams.
Nick Ferraro.
Oh, great, come on up.
I apologize, man, for my voice. My name is Nicholas Ferraro. I'm a resident here in Boca Raton, Florida, 222 North Conference Avenue. Recently bought a house with my future wife about a year ago. At 16, I moved from South, South Jersey to attend high school here in Florida, an experience that profoundly shaped my life. Now, as I envision raising my own children here, I'm deeply invested in the future of our community. I am one of 15 friends that attended high school here that is the only one here, and I'm not even from here. Over the years, I've witnessed the transformative impact of related companies' developments in neighboring cities. Their commitment to craving, creating vibrant, not dark, not dim, communities, mixed-use spaces, has not only enhanced aesthetics, but also strengthened local economies. The recent proposal for our downtown mirrors that, this, this vision promising a blend of residential, office, retail, and public spaces that can redefine Boca Raton's urban core. Living just a short walk from the proposed site, I'm particularly excited about the prospect of a dynamic downtown. Currently, many of us travel to West Palm or Fort Lauderdale for work and leisure, even Delray. By embracing this development, we can create opportunities right here, reducing commutes and fostering a sense of community. It's evident that these cities around us are evolving. We cannot fall behind, investing in developments that attract businesses and residents alike. To maintain Boca Raton's appeal and property values, we must keep pace. The Related Ross proposal offers a path forward, combining thoughtful design with the economic passions, passion we need. Now, I'd like to lighten up a little bit. I'd be lying if I said I didn't feel a little strange. Me, a diehard Eagles fan, an Ohio State fan, backing development from Stephen Ross. A Michigan alum and owner of the Miami Dolphins, if that doesn't prove how much I believe in this project, I don't know what does. Trust me, I'm a diehard Eagles fan. I was there yesterday. If I can look past the maze in blue for the greater good of Boca Raton, we can all come together and make this happen. Thank you for your time.
I live at 1305 Northeast 5th Avenue, and I've been listening very carefully and trying to comprehend all this. I grew up in Miami, then I moved to Broward, then to Palm Beach County. I've worked in Miami four years full-time as a lifeguard in recreation. I had children, then I went back to recreation. I worked for the city of Fort Lauderdale with the seniors and the handicapped. Then I worked, I went back to college to finish at FIU, and then I, I became a teacher, and I worked as a teacher for 21.4 years in two inner-city schools, one being very close to here, five miles in Deerfield. I know that recreation is so important to your life. There's two studies. There's one from the Mayo Clinic that was done with 8,500 people, and in this study, the people lived longer, 9.7 years longer if they played tennis. They lived 6.2 years longer if they played badminton. They lived 4.7 years longer if they played soccer. They lived 3.7 years longer if they did cycling, bicycle. They lived 3.4 years if they did swimming. They lived 3.2 years if they did jogging. But tennis is number one, almost 10 years longer. It is, it has helped me a lot. There is so much congestion here in Boca Raton that I was in my car coming home, and on Federal Highway, the most dangerous road in Boca, well, in Florida, not just in Boca, I was stopped at a red light on Spanish River Road, and a drunk driver, three times the legal limit, hit me in the rear. For a year and a half, I was in a cast, a boot. After that, I tried to play tennis again, and for a year and a half, I limped on the tennis court. I do not limp now, thank you, because of tennis, and I am so happy with tennis. So if you want to dream big, and you want Boca to be known for something, why not make all the area the best recreational city in South Florida, or in Florida? I can give you an analogy. In Dade County, in Dade County, the schools got so much bad reputation that they decided to become number one in something. So Dade County Schools, they became number one in their lunch program in the whole United States. They serve a healthy lunch. We want to keep our Boca Raton Tennis Center. We have over 250 approximate members that have yearly memberships, including myself.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow.
Yes, so please keep it, and if, and with 1,100 new residents, 1 in 13 people in the United States play tennis. That means we are going to have 84 more tennis players.
Thank you. David Williams.
84 more tennis players, need more tennis courts. Please keep our tennis courts at 200, 271.
Thank you. David Williams, Amy Lang, Ian Marlowe.
My name is David Kratus Williams. I live in Palm Beach Farms in Boca Raton, and I oppose all of these proposals.
Could you give us your street address, please, Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry?
Your street address, please, Mr. Williams.
Palm Beach Farms, 1275 Southwest 21st Street. I oppose all of these projects because you're begging the question. You're giving us options without establishing need for any of them. None of your documents do that, none of what you have posted online does that. You talk about the need for creating community. Community is an interaction among people, and that exists in the current area. It exists at the tennis center, it exists at the softball fields, it exists in the interaction among those areas. Shiny baubles, tall buildings, multiple kinds of new highbrow restaurants don't create community. When you put it on top of community, it destroys community, and that's what you're doing. You're destroying community, not enhancing it. The economic benefits can be obtained in different ways. As many have cited, there are other locations that can be developed. Developing where there is community, in the name of community, is the greatest of hypocrisy. Thank you.
Excuse me. Amy Lang, Ian Marlowe, and T.W. Anderson.
Hello, good evening. Amy Lang, 801 Amy Lang, 801 Azalea. I guess I live right behind this proposed development. And, you know, listening to everybody speak, I have mixed feelings about it. Part of me feels a little bit of trepidation about something this huge going in right there, especially losing some of these recreational facilities and the tennis courts and considering they may go, you know, far away, which would make all of our neighbors have to drive to the tennis courts a couple miles away, that type of thing. But part of me is a little excited about having further development in our downtown As most of you guys know, I'm a big fan of walkability and mixed-use development. And if this is done right, I think it could be a really exciting addition to our city. I think one of the things that hasn't been mentioned here today and where I would like to add to the discussion is that density doesn't increase congestion. Sprawl creates congestion. And separated zoning creates congestion. That's why we have congestion and that's why Fort Lauderdale has congestion and Miami has congestion, because you have huge swaths of land that are zoned, single-family residential, and they're divided from everything they need to do. So you have to get in your car to get a gallon of milk. So if I were to ask for what I would like to see in my backyard, it would be a not super-high-density development, but something that has enough mixed use so that I could walk out my back door and, or get on my bike, or get a cargo bike. And I might be able to go to this development and get my groceries and hang out. And on the way, I run into a salsa band playing. And then I see my neighbors. And I feel safe along the way. And I think that's the biggest thing for me, is that if we create density, we need it to be mixed use. We need everything present so we don't have to go far for it. And the streets have to be safe. We cannot widen any more streets. We need to have space for bicycles, pedestrians, wheelchairs. We need to be able to get out of our homes and do everything we need to do comfortably, and our children do too. Thank you.
Ian Marlowe, T.W. Anderson, and Derek Vanderpluug.
T.W. Anderson, 4008 Northwest 24th Terrace here in Boca. I'm a partner in the law firm Nelson Mullins, Riley &amp; Scarborough, but I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I'm here as a resident of the city of Boca. My wife and I moved to Boca almost 10 years ago when we were planning to start a family, largely because of the high-quality public schools and private schools that we have here in the area. We moved down here from Boynton. I used to drive from Boynton to Miami every single day of the week, five days a week, past my firm's offices in Boca and Fort Lauderdale because of the office experience that I had in Miami. I'm not here advocating for Boca to become Miami. And I don't think anybody else is either. But what I am advocating for is, as someone who's going to be working in this community for a long time, we need more high-quality office space and the environment and the experience that goes along with it. I currently work in the Lynn Financial Center. It's a beautiful place. We can have places like that, that don't have to be 40-story towers in Miami. There's nothing wrong with that, but we don't need that here necessarily. Nobody's advocating for that again. But I miss the opportunities of going into the office, going to walk to lunch with my colleagues, not having to get into a car and drive somewhere. This project is going to be a multi-use project, residential, hospitality, office space. The project requires someone and some entity that has experience handling all types of mixed-use developments that are going to be involved. For these reasons, I support the Related Ross project. Thank you.
Ian Marlowe, Derek Vanderpluug, Bruce Wretch. Mr. Vanderpluug, you're up. Is Ian Marlowe still present?
Good evening. My name is Derek Vanderpluug, an architect, an urban planner. I've been practicing in the community for many, many years.
And an address, please.
400 Celtic City Highway, Suite 220, although I live in Palm Beach Farms as well. And it strikes me as déjà vu, having been around in the same time and period when Meisner Park was being discussed and who was going to do it and what was the deal. And while both, I've not seen the actual business function of this particular either development. It appears to me that one is overdeveloped and the other one's underdeveloped. Terra has a little more green, whether it's, and it's somewhat meaningful and so forth, but there's no excitement in either proposal. And God knows, we've done work from Baltimore Inner Harbor, did a lot of work for the Ralphs Company back in the day, and Charleston and various places. And neither proposal gives me that same Big Bang feeling of an, of a urban area of the scale of this city. And it strikes me as that, yeah, maybe it need, if it's the business deal that you're deciding, that's one thing. That's a topic unto itself in how to approach it. You know, Meisner Park's unleased land is an example. You know, how does this one work? But moreover, if you're deciding on the graphics, as I would call them, the very preliminary plans, knowing what it takes to actually do one of these things, they're at a halfway point, maybe? And so it strikes me as there needs to be more time and thought put into the plan and the deal so you can make a rational value judgment as to what is better for the city for the next 100 years. And knowing how councils change over the years, as they have in my lifetime, this goes back to the original downtown plan of 1983 and the litigation and so forth that we went through on Meisner Park and all the rest of that sort of thing. And there's probably more land that needs to be assimilated than what has been looked at currently by both submissions. And I know there's more, but there's only two that are what I would consider viable. So, and both are qualified, obviously. But I would like you to think about those two things in context with each other, the plan and the business side of all of this. Thank you.
Ian Marlowe, Bruce Wretch. Come on up, Mr. Wretch.
I always hate following Derek. Bruce Wretch, I reside at 770 St. Albans Drive in Boca Raton. I also own the property at 275 Northwest 6th Street, about two blocks from the reference site upon which I am currently designing a residence for my wife and myself. I have a bachelor and master's degree in architecture and urban design study and practice for 49 years before escaping about a year ago. And the last 32 years, I was founder and managing partner of RLC Architects, which was here in our downtown for 30 of those 32 years. Also served on many boards, including the Downtown Advisory Committee, et cetera. And I also chaired the Boca Raton Community Church and Christian School Building Committee right across the street. So I have, I'm not reciting all this to brag. It's just I have a personal and professional investment in this community for nearly 40 years. And I'm very concerned about the development of our city, including this site. So I tried to put myself in your shoes. You have a difficult job. Forgive me if I missed it, but I did not see a selection criteria published. So I tried to think about, if I were going to write one, what would I want to see? Obviously, experience and developments of this nature at a high level would be important. Track record, commitment, a big one for me, commitment to design excellence and recognition for same, sustainability and best practices. And then the vision for the plan, the livability of this development, the mixture of uses, the quality of the spaces, the pedestrian, the pedestrian realm and connection to the downtown, not just to Meisner Park but to the downtown and whole, including Palmetto Park Road and points south and southeast. So I think it's pretty clear that there are two of the submittals that meet this list of criteria pretty well, two excellent development teams, two recognized experts in the field. And so what tips the scale? For me, it's recognition of our community values and desires, history of our downtown development, good, bad, or indifferent, and understanding of how that's translated via our codes and working within those codes, the DDRI zoning and closely associated with that is the traffic. So for me, that comes down to one, which is the Terra Frisbee concept. I heartily endorse that. And I urge you to strongly consider working with them. It's not a perfect plan. Frankly, I'd rather see a little more recreation. My boys played T-ball on those fields and I don't know where we can move them and they all played soccer there. So, any rate, thank you for listening.
Amber Tolleson. And wow, that is the last of the cards. And so then anyone else who wishes to speak after that can do so.
All right, take a, take a deep breath. I brought my softball memorabilia to break out for you guys. Thank you for what you guys do for our city. My name is Amber Tolleson, born and raised in Boca Raton, this charming city of Boca Raton. I produced a video that aired yesterday, formerly worked at ESPN, Miami Heat, Fox Sports before starting a coworking space.
And your address, please.
And my address is in Royal Hills. I own my home, 101 Southwest 6th Terrace. I have a coworking space that you spoke of called the Flamingo House. I'm a brand marketing strategist and a storyteller. Father worked at IBM, Colusa to River, used to sit on the board of public, or in public places in Boca Raton. After yesterday's meeting, I lost a lot of sleep last night. I felt compelled to stand up and share my story as a native Boca Ratonian. I actually went to walk the site today and collect my thoughts of what to say to everyone. I hit my first homerun at that ball field and brought Boca their first national softball championship home when I was 10. Yes, I broke out the memorabilia. And my old Boca hat. I'm not here to save the ball fields or anything. I climbed those bannions and fell in love on the swing set. There's nostalgia to this space.
Ms. Tolleson, please. You have to get into the mic because we can't hear you.
Yes. There's nostalgia to this space. So many parts of the city hold special meaning to me as a child and to many others. My question to the city is, how are you going to incorporate into your planning our historical story? I have yet to see that being presented. I know this is coming, it's imminent. And both great concepts, I mean, amazing, amazing concepts. The closest presentation that I'd like to take off my old Boca hat for, that meets the priority of encompassing placemaking and connectivity is Terra, Terra Frisbee. I like to maintain our unique small-town charm. Big business and their families still crave small-town fields like our holiday parade. My experience with branding, autograph collection Marriott hotels throughout the country, the number-one building block is the history of that location and the surrounding area. The owner would say, stop all architecture and interior design, we have to know the story. The brand architecture is first. That, I believe, needs to be done first as a foundational business build for any business, for a city, for personal branding, for a company. Before the buildings were built, we walked the location and surroundings and there's story in the dirt.
Ms. Tolleson, please, face us because we're not getting you on the mic so no one can hear you at home.
Okay.
Just face this way.
I clearly don't do this for a living. And behind the scenes, this is a big moment for all of you in Boca Raton and sitting up here. And I leave you with three questions. Possibly, the public doesn't know how quickly this is moving, but are we moving swiftly within 10 or are we just trying to execute quickly? Was ranking inclusive of the community survey? Can we consider the art center? Is our own brand story articulated or are we going to have others control our narrative? Can we work with the top proposal or top two proposals to get a more comprehensive focus on the Boca Raton brand? I challenge everyone involved on all levels that we're having our hometown fields and civic area, you know, rebuilt, that no matter who you are, as we move forward together, whether you share a coffee with our local architect, Juan Casado, remain true to your heart, to the essence of, and spirit of who really Boca Raton is. Where history and hospitality can unite. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please come forward. Last call for public comment on this item before we go to a ranking. Final call? All right, we will close the time for public comment. Council members, I think it makes sense that we go over the procedure for the rankings. So we have a resolution that would come up next, and it is a blank for us to rank. After talking over with Mr. Kaler, I suggest that we rank, we first go around whatever discussion we have, but we rank a top one first. Then after that, we can go to the second-ranked proposer. And it's up to you all, but I don't know, I don't see a need to go rank third and fourth. I think we can just deem whoever is in the top two tied for third. I don't know how likely it is that we would, if we can't proceed with negotiations with one and they fall apart, then we go to a second-ranked proposer. I don't know if we're going to necessarily go to the third at that point if we've gone over two, which I think would be unlikely. How do you all feel about that? All right, very good. Time for questions or discussion? Anyone?
If we're going to have discussion, I need a restroom break.
All right, why don't we just take a, why don't we just take a five-minute recess before we go into that? Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes.
...in the media, we've sent out multiple blasts, put it on social media. I've sent out some newsletters where it's been in there, so that's three more, so we try. I know the reach of our newsletters and social media is the majority of the residents in Boca Raton, or at least a population that exceeds a majority of those of residents, so we're doing our best, and we'll continue to do our best, and you can be part of the solution as you've been here tonight. So with that, questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Did you say how we were going to go over the ranking process? I think we stopped and took our break right before that.
Yes, so what I was saying is, after discussing the city attorney, our proposal just, or excuse me, our proposed resolution just says ranking of proposals. The city council ranks the proposals as follows, blank. The suggestion was by Mr. Kaler that if you're going to rank, you do the first ranking first. Take, you know, you canvas here, then we have that, then you do a second ranking, and we could proceed to third and fourth. I would suggest that we just deem, we only take, rank the top two and not go third and fourth. I don't know if it's necessary, and we can deem them both the third ranked person, and Mr. Kaler confirmed that that was fine.
Yes, the process that the mayor stated is transparent, open, and clear.
All right, so how do we all feel about that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a discussion before the ranking.
Sure, but I meant, how do we feel about the process? Of course, no, I don't want, I'm not proceeding, I'm not suggesting we go to the ranking. How do you feel about that process of the one, two, and then tie for third?
It's fine.
Okay. All right, very good.
Good.
All right, Mr. Rigder, you want to go?
Mr. Drucker had a point of order, point of inquiry?
Yeah, point of inquiry. Do we have to, are we going to do an amendment for the resolution? Are we doing the ranking prior to the resolution approval? Are we doing, I mean amendment, a motion for that resolution and then have discussion and then do the ranking? Or how does that, just, I want to make sure that we're doing this in the correct form.
That's, we could do it, Mr. Kaler, I think we could do it either way. If we want a discussion first, we settle on the ranking, and then the move-in says, "I move, we adopt Resolution 24, 2025 with the ranking of blank."
I think that's appropriate, now the council can decide how it wants to proceed.
Phil, do you have a different thought, Ms. Drucker?
I just feel that we don't ever do it that way, and I think, because we don't do it that way, I think we should do it the way that we always do it, because then everybody knows how this is a process. We usually make a motion on the resolution, we have discussion, and then we take a vote.
Ms. Drucker, let me just, a point of inquiry then. So are you suggesting, I imagine we want to have some discussion before we go to the ranking, so if we, if we move to adopt the resolution, we still need to fill in the blank, so...
Because the resolution just had a name for the blank.
Right, it just says, "The city council ranks the proposals as follows, blank," in Section 1.
Okay, I mean, we could have the discussion now, but, okay, that's fine.
All right. Mr. Rigder?
Thank you. I do have a presentation along with my remarks. I'd like to thank everyone for coming, I'd like to thank everyone for their input. It's been a long process, as the mayor and Mr. Brown have said. For years, we've been talking about the redevelopment of our government campus. It's been our top priority. As everybody knows, every building in the downtown government campus is at the very end of its useful life. It's underutilized, we cannot have our city council meetings there. The building, I know they put a roof on as a patch, as some lipstick, but it is at the very end of the useful life. There have been buckets there for years. The building does need to be upgraded. The community center is also at the end of its useful life, and so is the police station. So we've been trying to imagine what this process can look like. As Mr. Brown said in 2017 to 2019, and as we've talked about for multiple presentations, there was an initial iteration of this downtown campus. At the time, would cost the taxpayers $200 million. Recent estimates by one of the proposers, which I don't think is so far off, is at $355 million. So, the P3 process, the public-private process, partnership process, it's a statute created by our state government to basically recognize that we need the private sector to participate in helping us do some of these things, which creates this kind of win-win, where there's a benefit to both the taxpayers and the private sector. There's been no specific parameters, as the mayor indicated, on what should be proposed to allow creativity, and I think the real answer lies in the variety of the responses that we received. The innovation through the competition is a point of this pre-P3 process. This thought process of how our downtown should really function, what should it look like, was spearheaded and paid for by the private sector, and it allows for more creativity to occur. I think it has, which has been a benefit to the taxpayers. It started very important conversations, started. Prior to the procurement process being initiated, each proposer has met with us multiple times. I thank them. They've met with multiple stakeholders in the community, they've analyzed our city, our downtown, our government campus area west of the Bright Line, to determine what should go there. We've had multiple, as the mayor said, multiple visioning sessions, multiple presentations about our thoughts on this downtown. In my research of other downtown or district programs, as I've presented here many times, I've personally visited or researched projects and districts in multiple cities, including West Palm Beach, Wellington, Coconut Grove, Coral Gables, Miami, The Woodlands, Texas, Margate, Florida, and others. And in many of these locations, either the top two proposers in my ranking have either done projects, are planning projects, or their lead architect-planning firms have done projects. And I've come to the conclusion that as important as it is to pick a dance partner, it is perhaps more important to consider the music being played, because at the end of the day, both dancers need to be able to dance to the same tune. Each great city has its own music, beats to its own drum. Over the last almost 20 years living, working, starting a business here, raising my children here, it's something I've come to appreciate. Over the last years on council, it's something I appreciate our people expect. Boca is special for so many reasons, and in order for this partnership to work, the proposer not only needs to be qualified, but has to create a program that listens to this music, that fits into the fabric and being of our community, and that integrates seamlessly with our neighborhood and its neighbors, respects our past, and moves gracefully into our future. I believe the Terra Frisbee proposal integrates the music of Boca best into its initial proposal, and its plan most embodies the characteristics our people expect. Terra's program creates an integrated, sustainable neighborhood with significant public realm. It includes open, special, and unique places, parks and recreation components, and 70% of its site is accessible to the public, a unique retail market and mixture of uses, residences, office, and government needs, including a new community center with indoor recreation space, something lacking in Boca. I believe it's not overwhelming, though will need to be adjusted. It can create a true live-work-play environment where people, young professionals as well, will be able to walk and bike, access to mass transit, and not be dependent on their cars. It meets the city's objective to create vibrancy, reimagine the government campus, while creating revenue, and it is a plan for the next generation. I think it creates a special place and provides many reasons for people to go there, to hang out, to enjoy the amenities and a new neighborhood and its features for those that visit, a reason to get off the train. The economic benefit to the city is there, with a substantial annual ground lease payment increasing over time, indexed to inflation, of course, payments and property taxes, and a profit-sharing component, not dissimilar to Meisner Park, where if the rent depreciates, the city can make additional revenue. There are services that need to be provided with this revenue, of course, now, and without interruption, as the CRA expires in 2042, police, fire, sanitation, et cetera, but it is a substantial net benefit to the city for generations to come. The Boca City Center, Terra Frisbee's plan, is a true community-centric plan with something for everyone, and I could see people enjoying every part of this plan at every age. It's critical to point out again, as many of you have noticed, that there remains substantial due diligence, negotiation, and design, planning considerations to be made, which does not rule out other proposals at all. This is another reason why we are ranking proposers. If number one falls out, number two can step in. CBRE has initially vetted the companies and publicly stated that the financial capabilities of each to do so is in accordance, but more due diligence will need to be done on the financing issues, as well as many others. I do believe the residential intensity proposed by Terra made adjustments in the long run, and we may keep more parks and rec as a result. There will be adjustments in the program, as there would be ultimate adjustments to all of them. As I've said, in a multi-phase program, we could in fact decide that the third phase, or a portion thereof, may be unnecessary, or may need to change given more conditions at that time. Connectivity east and west will be need to be analyzed more significantly, but I appreciate significantly the offer by Terra Frisbee of a pedestrian bridge, which is a serious consideration, connecting the new neighborhood to Meisner Park. It will be critical to the connectivity, and more importantly, public safety. The sustainability-related considerations of the Terra proposal are excellent in terms of pedestrian and bike activation and connectivity, heat island control, water retention, carbon footprint, and analysis where you could see planning was created around these concepts, which I think will be critical to its success. For all these reasons, I believe this proposal and this proposer is the best one to lead this orchestra and to consider first on this project. It most meets with the fabric of our city and neighborhood, represents responsible and meaningful growth, and will create a fantastic special place, which will, people will be so proud of in Boca Raton. And for these reasons, I ranked Terra Frisbee proposal first. The Ross-related firm and its corporate iterations over the last generations of real estate development is one of the leading developers, if not the leading development organization in the world. We've heard it many times. I have the utmost respect for the brand, its leaders, the people, the innovation, the dedication to placemaking, the financial capability, the positive feedback, the references I've received, and the other projects they have completed. This is a great company to be partners with, and there are many opportunities to do so in Boca Raton. However, in this instance, as I implied on the presentation day, despite being adjacent to the Bright Line, creating a project whose primary purpose is to create self-contained business district with an office-intensive program, even if it's eventually adjusted, I do not feel will meld into the neighboring community, but rather perhaps could divide it. One of my notes was that a significant park portion of the proposed related plan is in place of the police station, just north of two strip centers that are not part of this plan. I've walked the site multiple times with people in the community and by myself, and it's an odd location on Palmetto Park Road, it's not ideal. I was pleased to learn yesterday that one of these strip centers is under contract, and it is critical to making this portion of the public realm feasible. But this is also suboptimal for such a significant portion of open space adjacent to the rear of strip centers, and the timing of this activation would not be realized for many years, given that the police headquarters must be rebuilt elsewhere before this can move, before it can move. On the other hand, the Terra Frisbee group contracted to purchase the property adjacent to the Bright Line platform to better integrate it and public realm immediately when you get off the train, a more integrated approach. The related proposal would require a great deal of adjustment, as it does not seamlessly fit into the surrounding community. As many people spoke about, it certainly creates an opportunity for and an important economic driver that should be considered. Many people, young professionals, spoke about the need of our future workforce. I don't disagree. Our projects before us this evening reflect these sentiments, I hope we consider it. But there are other locations in this city that are more appropriate for significant office density. Also, I don't think the increased traffic, parking, and impact outweighs the neighborhood integration component, even if infrastructure improvements are considered and a significant TDM program is created. And while I appreciate the additional submittals and the very recent ones to alleviate concerns regarding sustainability, traffic management, mass transit, et cetera, they are indeed postscripts, rather than meshed into the fabric of the plan itself. In looking at West Palm Beach, the development patterns of West Palm and its downtown plan indicate a crescendo of density, height, and office intensity in the center of the downtown, where it should be. Over the decade, Related began with city place 25 years ago as a mixed-use retail village. Given financial cycles, et cetera, the office intensity came later, but grew organically and followed the market. In Boca Raton, over the last 25 years or more, Boca has annexed western portions and expanded, and likewise, the downtown has expanded. But as I've stated in past CRA meetings, when I was chair in Beyond, our downtown developed with mostly residential, and only one new office building over the last 20 years, and one more approved. Our downtown has turned organically into a community neighborhood. I use the word "organically" to reflect that this is what our market, Boca's market, desired. Likewise, the geographic center of our city near Brick has become the economic corporate headquarters of the city, again, organically, as we have agreed to move the police station there, and the growing camp, the growing government campus is growing there as well. So in keeping with the organically occurring development patterns of Boca Raton, I don't think we can allow this portion of downtown to turn into something that it's not, and the downtown is not the proper place for this level of office intensity or office-centric program. Despite the office intensity of the project and almost a million square feet more in development, the Related Ross ground lease financial contribution to the city is not materially more than the Terra proposal, to an extent which would outweigh the better neighborhood plan. So the financial aspect would also require significant negotiation, renegotiation, and work as well. The tax impact would be better in the long run, yes, but only if we opted for the larger program. Lastly, we've received many favorable references regarding Related Ross, that they are a great company to work with. I don't doubt it, and I've enjoyed all our interactions so far. They've personally come to my office, they've spent time listening to me, and the things that I think are important to the people of Boca Raton. As I've said, I think there are opportunities to work together. Despite these significant references, most of these comments do not relate to the merits of the plan, or their proposal, but to the firm itself, which I've said I have the utmost respect. On the contrary, nearly all of the favorable comments and references with respect to the Terra Frisbee proposal laud both the merits of this specific plan, its favorable integration into the downtown, and the quality of its corporate leadership and the way that they have listened to the community and their planning as well. Some of the comments yesterday imply that Related Ross cannot otherwise participate in Boca Raton unless they participate in this project. Mr. Ross has said on multiple occasions, including yesterday, that he believes in Palm Beach County, which is a reason why he wants to be in Boca Raton. I share this enthusiasm, Mr. Ross, for Boca Raton, but the question is not if I believe in the future of Boca Raton, but do you? If you do, then this opportunity is not the end, nor the only one, but the beginning of looking at a series of opportunities in locations all over the city, which would be a great benefit to our corporate community and our people, and it's something I promise that I will do to work with you to create these opportunities. Given that both the Related development plan and the financial proposal will require a more significant amount of negotiation, reconsideration, and adjustment than the Terra Frisbee proposal, I find that this proposal must be ranked second. I'm going to skip over a bunch of my comments, and let me just say, I believe the Terra Frisbee proposal is the most innovative in demonstrating what a special place can be for the city. And provided we can work out the terms and financial assurances necessary to move ahead, I believe they're the proper party to begin negotiations with for an interim agreement at this time. After the presentation's last time, I circulated to the staff and CBRE an additional RFI for clarification of important questions that will be distributed shortly to the proposers, answers to which will be important prior to the, prior to them being able to execute interim or comprehensive agreements. Likewise, this is just an excerpt of my remarks, my complete written remarks, with some additional commentary I'm submitting to the clerk to be put on the record, together with several appendices, which include my RFI and the corresponding presentation. I'd like to thank my colleagues for listening to me, I'd like to thank the people for listening to me, and the proposers for their investment and their belief in Boca Raton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wants to speak next? Ms. Drucker?
Sure, I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Rigder, thank you, everyone. So obviously, I don't have a complete prepared document, if you know me, I speak from the heart. I've been on this board, or I've been on this council for over five years. I moved to Boca, I started coming here in 2002, and I moved officially in 2004. I've raised two children that have played in a lot of the softball fields and the T-ball fields and in the indoor recreation space. So Boca is my home, I was born in Jersey, but I was raised in Miami, and they were called Westchester, where we didn't have, not Westchester, New York, Westchester, Miami, where we didn't have all these facilities, but product of a Title I school, and a first college graduate in my family. And basically, I moved to Boca, you know, when I got married, and I worked in Miami, so I understand the transparency of job creation and having job creations of a corporate background. And as I've sat the last few weeks, and we've been talking about this, and I agree with Mayor Singer, we've been talking about this for a long time, especially since I've been on this council, we've been talking about the government center and what our plans were for the downtown. I have been a trailblazer on the council and throughout on mobility, connectivity, mass transit, commuter rail, connectivity, et cetera, et cetera. And over the weekend, and I was in DC during the week, and then in Palm Beach for a conference, where I spent some time in some of the projects that Related Ross has had there, but over the weekend, I thought it was in my best interest to take my efforts and go Tri-County, just go down and go look at all the different projects that were out there, and just sit in the activated spaces, and just sit on my own and just do my own thing without anyone's input, just me as a resident and me as the deputy mayor and council member the people elected me twice to be. And I sat there saying, how do these two different projects fit into the tapestry of my community, one that I love and I serve, and that I've had the honor to serve for over five years? And I came back, Sunday was Super Bowl Sunday, everybody knows, I'm a huge Dolphins fan. I didn't watch the Super Bowl this year because I was just in my own thoughts, and I kind of stayed in, and kind of looked through all the proposals again, and I wrote notes, I journaled a lot, and I said, you know, I'm going to get a good night's rest, and that was for Monday, which I didn't. And, you know, it is going to come to me, there's going to be a sign, it's going to come. And then, it's very interesting when you have kids, I have a 19-year-old and I have a 16-year-old, and, you know, he wakes up and he goes to football at 5:40, and he came in and he said, "Ma, what are you doing up? Are you up already? Are you coming, you're out, you're out of your bed, you're here." I said, "Yeah, you know, I have a really big decision as to what I'm going to do, because this is going to affect your generation, not only my generation, but the future generations of our city." "Well, how hard can this be?" And I said, "Well, let me explain this, what's happening," and we kind of went through some of these kind of project, and I kind of showed him some of the stuff, obviously everything is public record, and he said, "Wow, you know, that is a real big decision that you're going to make." And as I was sitting here, you probably noticed, I picked up my phone, and he said, "How's the meeting? Have you made the hard decision?" So with that said, I also went back and I looked at all the community input, and we've had a lot, we've gotten a lot of feedback. I have gotten stopped in many places over the last few weeks, I've had conversations with many, many people in the audience, just listening. I haven't provided any of the feedback on how I felt on the project, and I did that purposely, because I didn't want anybody to think that I was biased, and that's how I take all my votes, by the way, or all my, anything that I decide on the dais. And in the end, a lot of the projects covered a lot of the things that we wanted. If we could kind of mesh them together, it would have been the ideal project. But in the end, understanding that area, Terra Frisbee for me was what? One, just because of the public space, the recreation, and the size, the size of the project. When I, and I've said this earlier, so this shouldn't be as a surprise, this office space is too big on the Related Ross project, and the hotel, I just stayed at the Hilton in Convention Center, and it kind of, another experience, I was just there over this conference that I attended, and I just thought, it's just too big for Boca Raton, especially in that particular quadrant. And I have sat up here as a mobility, connectivity, moving people around, and in my heart, I can't bring a project of that size here. And I thank Mr. Hemel, Mr. Ross, Mr. Bigley, Mr. Vargas, we have spent enormous amounts of time, and I appreciate your entire staff, and the best foot forward that you put for our city, and I agree with Mr. Rigder, there's so much opportunity throughout our city, which is just not our downtown, where you can possibly have a presence, and I hope that you're open to that. To Namdar Group and Rockaway Point, obviously those two we're not ranking today, thank you for also submitting your proposals and for taking the time to present to us. But today, for me, Terra Frisbee won because I believe it's the best choice for the community. I believe that it will create jobs in its own organic way, I believe that it will attach the people, the connectivity, the mobility. Bright Line is there, and I've had conversations with all the players that have come to me, and everybody's going to work together and play in the sandbox for the good of the community, for the good of the city of Boca Raton. I have been an incredible advocate of Bright Line and of Tri-Rail, you guys know I ride the rails, I do. And I've had conversations with a lot of the different entities, and no one is not going to work here, because we didn't pick the Related and we picked something else to rank first. So, because again, when I said a couple weeks ago that if you want to come to Boca, you better understand Boca, then you better understand that if you're coming to Boca, you're going to have to listen to the community, you're going to have to be flexible, you're going to have to follow the directions of what we're giving, and you're going to have to work together. And if that doesn't happen, the process doesn't work. So I stand before you, and I commit to you, the community that's listening, and the people that are out there, that while I'm on this dais, that will be my priority, to make sure this process stays in line, and it stays the way that the community wants, because I too am a resident, and I too have a future generation here with my children, and hopefully my children's children. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you all that participated, and for all the public comment. I also want to take a time to thank staff, everybody here has been working around the clock. CBRE, thank you so much, Mr. Kaler, our outside council, thank you so much for coming here and trying to make Boca the best place to live, work, and play. And in my famous little tagline, and I know it sounds cheesy, but many people use it, I believe that for the city of Boca Raton, the best is yet to come. Please stick with us, continue to give input, and we're going to get there together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak now?
I can go. May I?
Please.
So I'm repeating myself, I suppose, based on the invocation, but Boca is obviously very unique, we are blessed in many, many ways. I have a couple generic comments that don't relate specifically to these top-two proposals, but I'll get to that in a second. You know, one way in which we're unique in the city of Boca is we are in such a strong financial position, but we don't necessarily need to undertake a P3 engagement. We don't necessarily need to have a public-private partnership in order to get facilities that are suitable for our hard-working staff to work in, and that is, somebody had mentioned earlier what the need was. We have a city hall and a community center that are way past their useful life, they leak, they flood at times, it's just not a good spot for our very talented and hard-working staff to work in. I don't want our people to be working in places like that, that's one of the reasons why we don't meet there anymore, is because it's just not a workable place. So, but, that said, even though we are in an immensely strong financial position, there are advantages to engaging with a partner in order to get new facilities built for a city like ours. You know, normally how it would work, well, let me put it this way, with a P3, there's, the upside of that is that it minimizes the city's upfront costs to rebuild their city facilities, I think most people understand that. And if you understand the need, and you understand the significant amount of money that goes along with building those facilities, that's an issue, even for a strong city, financially strong city like ours. But one upside of the P3 process is it allows us to minimize that cost, or eliminate it in some way. But in order to do that, we typically have to give up something, meaning there's certain lands that the city owns that we would be made available then for private uses, right? So whatever we get, naturally, we would have to give something. But I think one of the things I care a lot about, I imagine you all do too, is trying to, at least for me, minimize the amount of city-owned public land that gets removed from the purely public realm. Right now, all of the land that we're talking about in this city campus is all purely owned and used by the city. So I want to see ways in which we can minimize the amount that we end up giving up in exchange for these facilities. Now, we of course do this in several ways. One obvious way is we can be responsible with the size and the scale of the facilities that we want, right? We want to have good space for our hard-working staff to have, but we don't have to have a Taj Mahal, we don't have to have any place that's over the top, I'm not interested in that, I don't think anybody here is interested in that. So we can minimize the give by allowing for more modest, suitable, but modest, facilities. We can also do that through whatever financial terms and lease payments that we would be negotiating with whatever partner we choose, but another way to do it is by providing a different source for the cost of the construction. And I raise that to say that we can do that, and I think minimize the amount of public space that gets sent outside of the public realm, the purely public realm, by providing an additional financing mechanism through a bond. And that's how some cities traditionally do these things. We could do the entirety that way, but again, there are advantages to using, having a development partner help us along the way here. So I would suggest that we give thought, all of us, to, one way of minimizing the give to the private sector, no matter who it is, would be to finance a significant portion of whatever construction we have through a bond. I've had discussions with our CFO, who I call the ZFO, Mr. Zervis, I've had discussions with the city attorney and city manager about that. We should give that some thought, we don't have to decide on that now, that's not a today discussion. But what is a today discussion? But what is a today discussion? It's important, I think, to reemphasize, and I've done my best to do this along the way, by identifying the fact that today, the stage that we're at is picking a partner. It is not picking a plan. It is picking a partner, not picking a plan. So, I've used, to my chagrin eventually, was this dance analogy, this dance partner analogy. The idea was that we are eventually going to be deciding on a dance routine. But right now, we're just picking the partner. We're picking a dance partner. I'm not a professional dancer. I'm not a dancer of any kind. If I were to do some sort of dance, I would probably need a professional partner to lead me along the way. And as part of that, you want to choose the most effective, talented, experienced dancer in order to get you into a place where you can succeed with your dance routine. Now, a professional dance partner would naturally want to give you some suggestions on what kind of dance you should dance, whether it's the salsa, as we mentioned earlier, or whatever kind, of how daring the dance is, how aggressive the dance can be. All of those are things that naturally a professional would have some thoughts on. But that's not ultimately what we're deciding on now. We're not deciding on the dance routine. We're not deciding what steps we're going to be taking. We're instead deciding who's going to partner with us along in that process. We have done our best, I think, at the city to try and communicate that, I have. And I think a lot of the comments that were made by members of the residents that came and spoke were addressing various, what they viewed as imperfections, and I agree with them, with the various plans that were submitted. There are imperfections in the plans that were submitted. None of them were perfect. Forgive me, both of you, for saying that. None were perfect. All needed to have changes. All needed to be scaled back, in my view. But the point of our exercise right now is not to identify, or even nitpick what those proposals were in terms of the plans. The point was to pick the partner. In my view, I see what we're doing today as picking the partner. And so it's clear to me that we didn't do it, I didn't do maybe, but the city, I think, didn't do a great job communicating that nature of the phase that we're in now. I've also, it's been made clear, I think, by several of the comments, that we haven't done a great job of explaining what the timetable is going to be. We've heard from several folks that we need to slow down, in that this is all being rushed. I can understand from a resident's perspective why it may seem that way, but this is really just the first step in a much longer dance, right? Identifying the partner, figuring out what the dance should be, how bold, how daring, what it looks like, all of that, still hasn't happened and is not going to happen. I don't, I think, I probably can, we all agree, the exact proposals that were submitted, none of them, in particular, are going to get built the way that they were submitted, okay? There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, potentially months of work that needs to be done, on what eventually gets built. I think the city manager made that point just a few minutes ago when he was addressing some of the comments. What the ultimate development is going to look like? Not determined. To be determined. To be determined over the next few months. So to the extent that residents are wondering, why is this happening so fast? Why is nobody listening? We are. We are listening intensely to what you have to say. And I think that's helped illuminate a lot of what the decision-making has been. You've heard the proposers say, "We will be flexible." Both have said, "We will be flexible in what gets chosen," okay? And that is in part a function of how much good public input we've had and how valuable it is. So I hope that that continues to happen. Okay, so, now. However, though we are choosing a dance partner, we did ask, as part of our offering memorandum, for the proposers to submit conceptual plans, concepts of a plan, one might say. My review of those plans, which again, is not the stage we're in, we're not picking a plan, we're picking a partner, my review of those plans showed that, and I'm saying it myself, I believe all of them were too big, all of them were too dense, some were out of scale in some ways, okay? None were perfect. All would have to be modified to fit the character and charm of our city and the area that we envisioned having this, you know, comprise our downtown and our government campus. There was, in some ways, too much square footage of some things. There was the buildings, some of which were too tall. There were too many units. There was too much office in some cases, there was too much density. Okay, so again, but to their credit, I've communicated to these proposers, all of them, we're not picking the specific plan at this stage, we're picking a partner. And I think those kinds of comments, ones that I just mentioned, which I agree with, were communicated by our residents in the course of our public input, or the course of, you know, weeks and months longer, I guess. But at the risk of belaboring the point, once again, we are not picking that plan, we are picking a partner at this point. And on that, I say it's actually a very, very close call. Because these are two very talented, exceptional, and some of the best in the business when it comes to partnering with a city for a project of this, you know, as big as this one is. But between the two, they are between Related and Tara Frisbee, I give a slight edge to Related Ross. That's based on the following. Not specifically their plan, I think I've made that point now, but it's based on the following. The history that they have, the experience that they have in projects of this type, their local presence, their commitment to staying local, their commitment to holding the buildings they build, the excellence in their design. One of the architects who spoke tonight spoke about that. I think that was revealed in what they showed us. The sustainability component to what they've offered, all of that, in addition to the significant relationships that they have in, with potentially bringing new businesses here, help make our economy stronger, that makes, for me, anyway, put Related Ross in the number-one position. But really, it's a very close call. And I say that because Tara Frisbee has a very, very strong case. They've made a very strong case. They were, between their experience, their vision, the resources they bring to bear, the projects they've built in the past, they are a very, very strong candidate also. And between the two of them, I'll be candid, if we were picking based on a plan, their plan, the skies, the scale and size of their conceptual plan, was, I admit, slightly more in line with what Boca community wants and what is consistent with our history. It's not perfect, like I said. I think, still think it's too dense. There's a lot of residential units there. But again, and I thought we had made this point repeatedly over the course of our time together discussing this topic, we were not picking a partner, sorry, we're not picking a plan, we were picking a partner. And so we have tremendous options between the two of them, but between them, I would put Related Ross at number one and Tara Frisbee at number two. But let me, and then let me end by saying the following. I got this sense from some of the comments made by the residents, that tonight is the end. Tonight is not the end. Tonight is not even the beginning of the end. It's more like Winston Churchill said, "The end of the beginning." Picking a partner is the first step in a much longer process. Determining what the buildings look like, how tall they are, how dense they are, what types they are, what uses they have, all of that is going to be ultimately decided by the community. And we're going to have plenty of opportunity for folks to be able to communicate that to us along the way. That tonight, again, is not the end. We have many opportunities for public input on this. And we would appreciate the community continuing to let us know what they want, what they want to see, because our job is to reflect the will of the community in the decision that gets made regarding the development here.
Thank you. Would you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this has been a very long night and it's been, this topic of conversation has been a top priority since I've been on council, which is a little over two years now. And I know it goes back much further than me being on council. So I wrote some notes out and then I've written a bunch of notes from tonight, so hang with me on this. I want to thank everyone so much who's been a part of this process to this point, the public, my colleagues, our staff, CBRE, and of course, our residents. And to the proposers, Cody, David, Rob, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Ross, Jordan. I want to thank you for all the work, all the time you've spent with all of us and your interest in our community. So as all my colleagues have said, tonight, we take the next step in a process that will take many more months before a final plan is decided on. The public will have many more opportunities to both speak and listen, and will work with the selected team to address the issues of such an important project. And before we break ground, we'll address all the outstanding issues. And I want to talk about some of those. So, Mr. Lou Kasich had told us that we had, I think yesterday, it was about 206 public comments on our website, and I'm sure it's now more. Those comments have been shared with proposers, they've been shared with all of us, and to no one's surprise, most of the topics were about traffic, about concurrency, about increasing our population, about increasing crime, green space, keeping the banyan trees, recreation space, tennis, softball, losing some of our charm and some of our quaintness, whether mom-and-pop businesses would be included versus larger, bigger, expensive retail, affordable housing, impact analysis, flooding, and bike connectivity and safety and walkability. Those are all issues that will be addressed. There were two children that got up to speak tonight, Ariana and Preston. Ariana is concerned about traffic. She's concerned about residential, and she wants us to keep asking questions. Ariana, we are going to keep asking questions. Preston is worried, he's a freshman in high school, he's worried about getting a job when he gets out of school. And I can tell you, as a mom of four grown kids, two of whom, two of whom live and work in Boca Raton, one just a few minutes' walk from our downtown government campus with my granddaughter, and two that live out of the state. Both of those two work in tech, but one is definitely moving back to Florida. I can tell you, jobs are always a concern for people. And, you know, we can help out with some of that by creating what we create here, but it's also, you know, up to the individuals and what they choose to go into and the job markets that are available. So, I want to tell everybody that we hear you. And Ms. Morrow, I'm still trying to figure out the number of years I'm going to live longer, because I swim, bike, and run. So, thank you for bringing that up. So, this project must not just fit our community, but this part of our community. On the edge of our downtown and adjacent to both residential and commercial areas, it must be the correct scale and scope for this part of Boca Raton. My message when I met with the proposers was consistent. It was consistent with everybody I met with. I never changed. I know that this is both a transformational and evolutionary initiative, and it must reflect our Boca Raton's DNA while providing both direct revenue as well as a new tax base in revenue that will both fund our future budget needs and fuel our future economic growth. As Mr. Wigder said, looking at this and doing a P3, it's a win-win for everyone, I think. I'm going to veer off from what Mr. Thompson has said many times. I think that we have spent a lot of time on talking about a plan. Many, many months and many, many meetings. And while it may not be a final plan, I'd hate to think that all that time was wasted on talking about the plan. So, while I am also picking a dance partner tonight, I have to be compatible with that dance partner. And that dance partner has to know how to lead me and has to listen to what I need. And, you know, there's other things that came up, like affordable housing. Mr. Havelka, you talked about your daughter, who's a teacher, and your son-in-law, who's a firefighter. Affordable and workforce housing is precisely for those type of people. That's, I think some people don't know exactly what affordable and workforce housing means, but I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for 36 years. My daughter's a physician assistant, my one daughter's a teacher, my son-in-law's a mental health counselor. It's for, it's for that type of population. So, you know, hopefully, we get some more affordable workforce housing, your kids can come back to Boca and live here. So the growth that we need, it needs to be the kind of growth we want, and we have a clear vision for what our community should look and feel like. And we also have well-known guide rails that we all respect. Height is one of them, and intensity of uses is another one. So while I believe all four of the proposals are worthy of consideration, and I'm aware that some of the teams have expressed in the last few days a willingness to be more flexible, one team seems to have listened most closely to the council's vision and of that of our community. And invested in a detailed plan that most respects our past, responds to our needs of today, and responsibly envisions what our future should be. With a balance of uses in a scale that best fits Boca Raton with exceptional initial planning and a financial package that provides the right dollars versus developmental intensity, tonight, I'll be supporting the Tara Frisbee proposal as the top-ranked proposal to move forward to the next phase of the process. Thank you.
Right, well, thank you all. I'll weigh in as well. And this has been one of the longer conversations councils had, but it's important. I'll try to be brief as I can. First, thanks to everyone. I appreciate all four proposals, and I appreciate everyone who's weighed in and will continue to weigh in over the last few months. I don't believe Namdar or Roca are in the room. They both offered different visions. Namdar did not talk with us before the cone of silence went in place, or at least not me, I don't know how many of us. So while I appreciate their interest, I think they were a little late to the game. And Roca Point offered a partial solution, but I think we were looking for something more comprehensive. That was what we articulated in the vision. So, appreciate both of those. For the two people who, teams who are here, thank you. I'd be grateful to work with either of you. I hope that you will continue to explore Boca Raton, even though you are not ranking someone one today. I think there are other opportunities, and we'd be blessed to have you both in our city. I think you bring a whole mix of uses. I will be ranking the Boca Raton City Center one and Related Ross two, for the simple purpose that I think there, while we are choosing a dance partner, I think part of this back and forth, which has been constrained, for those who don't know, we've been under a cone of silence for the last month, so we've not had any oral conversations with any of them other than when they've come at the microphone. I think the Tara Frisbee plan, the economics speak a little bit better, on a per-unit basis, they're better. I think that speaks to our ability to continue the negotiations there. I think both are qualified entities, and I am a little, and I'm very excited and heartened that Related Ross, who's done so much for Palm Beach County, is looking to do so here in Boca Raton and looking to bring this quantity of office space to our city. I do have some concerns with their unit mix compared to their mix of uses and the location there and the impacts. We will begin negotiations with one and see where that goes. I encourage both companies to, one, continue to want to work with us, and I guess keep your powder dry, because there's going to be other opportunities. And to get back, and I'll just conclude now, because we've heard a lot, there's a reason for the why, it's not just economics. We all set out on a vision of creating a space that was more integrated, that creates a place that people want to be in, that serves residents as well, and not just what we have now, which is the city hall and a community center isolated by limited recreation uses. We're looking at the next phase of Meister Park, which was the integrated hole. We've learned a lot from them, and the market's changed in 30 years. We're looking in the next 30 years and beyond. And I think having a site that connects throughout the downtown and other places, but also is a little more holistically organic, helps as well. And I think we're going to be working toward that. But that's why you want it. It's not just the money. The money is not the concern, it's that the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. So I appreciate everyone who's come in, and I appreciate the time, and I won't talk further because I know this is a long night for everyone who's spent so much time, and we have a lot of other matters to consider. But I'm just grateful. And again, we have to rank one, but I hope to be doing business with both of these fine companies and entities, and really appreciate the conversations we've had going back a number of months and beyond. I'm grateful. And it's not an easy decision that any of us are making, that's why we've had such a long discussion. But we look forward to hopefully working with you both, and really appreciate it. So with that, I guess it's time for a resolution for, who would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-2025, with a ranking of Boca City Center one and Related Ross two.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to read the title. Yes, thank you.
Resolution 24-2025. A resolution of the city of Boca Raton, Florida, ranking proposals submitted in response to the city's public-private partnership solicitation for the downtown campus project in accordance with the city's public-private partnership policy, P3 policy, and Florida statutes 255.065, directing the city manager to proceed with the negotiation of a non-binding interim agreement with the highest-ranked proposer, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. And who would like to move adoption of this ordinance where we insert on Section 1, the city council ranks the proposals as follows. Boca Raton City Center LLC first, Related Ross second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I think Mr. Wigder got it in, but that's okay. We've had a lot of discussion. Anything further? Again, thank you all. Ms. Sidens, please.
Wigder?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Knackless?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
All right, thank you.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
All right, thank you. We will immediately proceed to work on this, so that we can try to work on our timeline for an interim agreement, which again is the latest step, or only just one of the latest steps. In the meantime, we will have the town hall next week, and I expect that there'll be lots more communication coming from the city, from other people, from our number-one-ranked proposer, I imagine, too. They'd be well-pressed to do that. And thank you all. Why don't we take a few short breaks, because I know a lot of people don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, and appreciate you all. Thank you.
Good evening. We are resuming our city council meeting at 8:59. Before we move on to the next item, I think we have a bit of housekeeping because I'd mentioned the cone of silence and I'll ask Mr. Kaler, our city attorney, to review where we stand now that we've taken an action on this matter. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as you all know, the cone of silence is a city ordinance that was adopted by the city and it's a prohibition on certain types of communications between a respondent and certain officials regarding a procurement activity. Under our ordinance, it commences and commenced when a competitive window opened and then closed. So in this instance, the competitive window was opened, I believe, in November when the notice of competitive bidding was put out to the public and it and the deadline for submission occurred on January 9th. So as of January 9th at 3:00 PM, the cone of silence went into effect. However, cone of silence is not indefinite and so at a certain point, under the code, it terminates. And so, under the city's code, there's four potential actions that can terminate it and the one that's really most relevant for tonight is the city takes action that ends the procurement activity. So Resolution Number 24-2025, which was adopted right before our break, effectively ends the competitive procurement process. The council has ranked proposers and has directed proposals and has directed the manager to negotiate an interim agreement with the highest-ranked proposers. So there is no more competitive evaluation occurring and as of the adoption of Resolution 24-2025, the cone of silence is no longer in effect.
Questions? Clarification? All right, very good. Then we'll proceed with our agenda and the next item is number 11, quasi-judicial and related public hearings. And Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title first of Resolution 14-2025?
Resolution Number 14-2025, a resolution of the City of Boca Raton considering for the approximately 11.68 acre property generally located at 1150 Northwest Broken Sound Boulevard, an amendment to an approved site plan, planning and zoning board resolution Number 2024-001 for a commercial industrial multifamily development to authorize the construction of a new seven-story, 287-unit, approximately 355,055 square feet multifamily residential building, including 10% affordable housing and 5% workforce housing units and 2,000 square feet of retail space to be located on the ground floor with related onsite and offsite improvements and considering the abandonment of a portion of a 10-foot wide water easement on the subject property, providing for a peeler, providing an effective date.
Thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Kaler to review the quasi-judicial procedure that will govern tonight's public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The quasi-judicial public hearings this evening are governed in accordance with the city code and rules of procedure. In accordance with the city's rules, there is a provision that states that any applicant requesting action before the council this evening shall disclose at commencement or continuance of the public hearing any consideration or payment to support or withhold objection to the requested relief this evening. And in addition to that rule, the rules governing the procedure are attached to the agenda and a copy is available from the city clerk.
Thank you. At this point, we'll ask councilmembers if they have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Lon Tabachnick, Malcolm Butters, and Bonnie Miskel separately about the merits of this application and I believe that concludes my ex parte disclosures.
Thank you. Ms. Nackless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also Malcolm Butters, Michael Marshall, Lon Tabachnick, Bonnie Miskel, a few people of Mutual of America team on a Zoom about a year and a half ago and Jonathan Ungin at some point.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mayor Singer. In the last two years, I've had discussions with Mass Mutual, Malcolm Butters, Lon Tabachnick, Bonnie Miskel, residents, I think maybe even John Ungin came to me. Everything's going to be in the record. And the last meeting that I had with Mr. Tabachnick and Malcolm Butters was yesterday and I had a conversation today with Ms. Miskel and I believe that takes care of all the quasi, all my ex parte. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reeder?
Thank you. Also, in the last two years, I've had multiple meetings with Lon Tabachnick, Malcolm Butters, Michael Marshall, Bonnie Miskel. I have met with the Mutual of America team, both down here and in their offices in New York, I believe about a year and a half ago, and had recent conversations, multiple conversations with Bonnie Miskel and Lon Tabachnick in the last week or two as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And my ex parte communications are the same as Ms. Nackless's and Mr. Wigder with the exception of I spoke to, in person, to Mutual of America representatives whose names I don't recall. It was at their office in Boca Raton approximately two years ago. I've been past the site multiple times and all the conversations with those aforementioned people were advocating for the project or answering questions I had about it. I believe that concludes everything. So with that, we will ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise so the clerk can administer the oath. And if you think you want to speak and you're not sure, just rise now. It saves time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Jacob Garman, planner with Development Services will make the presentation on Resolution Number 14-2025.
Gerben.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jacob Garman, planner two for the city, and I'll be presenting the Mutual of America residential project located at 1150 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment for a commercial industrial multifamily development, or CIMD, that incorporates the previously approved seven-story, 157,861 square foot office building with a six-level parking structure and includes a new seven-story, 287-unit, approximately 335,055 square foot multifamily residential building with a seven-level integrated parking structure that includes 10% of units provided as affordable housing and an additional 5% of units provided as workforce housing, with a 2,000-square-foot commercial component that consists of retail space on the ground floor along with associated onsite and offsite improvements, together with the abandonment of portions of a 10-foot wide water easement. If approved, this project would utilize 287 of the remaining 2,205 units permitted for CIMD citywide, authorized pursuant to city code. The project will be located on the north, on the western portion of approximately 11.68 acre property located at the southwest corner of Northwest Broken Sound Parkway and Northwest Broken Sound Boulevard, approximately .3 miles north of Yamato Road and approximately .5 miles west of Congress Avenue. The property is owned Light Industrial Research Park and has a future land use designation of planned mobility. The overall site plan consists of the multifamily residential building to the west, the approved office parking structure to the east, and the approved office building that is located between those structures. The site provides vehicular access along both Broken Sound Boulevard and Broken Sound Parkway. While vehicular access points to the property were not modified with this application, the internal driveway was modified due to the reconfiguration of the drainage lake, which redirected a portion of the driveway. This modification resulted in the removal of a large landscape island to the north of the property next to the drop-off area. As a result of this modification, the applicant has continued to provide landscaping throughout the property and installed benches throughout the property to be utilized by residents and the office workers. Additionally, an eight-foot wide concrete shared-use path has been provided along the property frontage and the internal sidewalk network will connect to the shared-use path near each of the vehicular access points. Here's the site plan for the multifamily residential building, which shows a close-up of the multifamily building, the commercial component, and residential amenities. The multifamily building is located on the western portion of the property where the entrance is, to the integrated parking structure is located towards the northern portion of the site and adjacent to the commercial component that is included in the project. The commercial component, as required by city code, is a 2,000-square-foot retail space located on the ground floor of the multifamily residential building. Additionally, the project also provides several residential amenities located on the ground floor that includes cafe lounge, co-working space, event room, and other such spaces which are interior to the project near the entrance. The project also provides exterior residential amenities that include a recreational area with a putting green, a pool, and a pool deck, and they have been provided towards the southwestern corner of the property, towards the rear, which contains a barbecue area, covered pavilion, and several different seating options. Mulch Trail has also been provided along the southern portion of the site that connects the pool deck area to other walkways internal to the site. This is the eastern and northern elevation that would face the office building towards the intersection of Broken Sound Parkway and Broken Sound Boulevard. And then these are the western and southern elevations that would face towards the old golf course at Broken Sound. Here is a rendering that shows portions of the northern facade and the western facade of the proposed multifamily residential building from Broken Sound Parkway to the west. This is the elevation that would face Broken Sound Parkway and a portion of the golf course at Broken Sound. Here's a bird's-eye view rendering of the overall site with the multifamily residential building to the right, the office building in the center, and the parking structure to the left. During the analysis of this application, staff found that the project will provide an additional 287 rental dwelling units in the city with 29 affordable housing units and 15 workforce housing units. The project is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses and the project's design supports goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan related to pedestrian, bicycle, and transit mobility. The project complies with all applicable code requirements and there are no negative impacts to the public welfare associated with the proposed easement abandements. This project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board for a recommendation on January 2nd. It was recommended approval in a vote of five to zero and the Development Service Department recommends approval of the site plan amendment with a commercial industrial multifamily development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? All right, seeing no questions, we'll open up the public hearing. We'll invite the applicant to come first. Please give your name and address. You have up to 20 minutes, although you may not need it all.
Good evening. David Millage, for the record, 14 Southeast Fourth Street. Thank you, Mr. Gerben. Thank you, Mr. Shad, for working with us and the applicant through this process. I think we are providing a good plan. I have a full presentation, but I don't think it's necessary to go through it. Well, happy to do so if the council would like me to, but happy to answer any questions from the board.
Councilmembers, any questions? Where are we with the covenant?
We've been working a lot with staff regarding the covenant. There was one minor cleanup item to Section 4.2 on page 15, just to make it consistent with the definitions of the covenant. We discussed it with Mr. Shad. I believe that was the final matter that we're trying to work out.
Mr. Shad?
Brandon Shad, Development Services Director. I'll agree. So we agreed to make the proposed change to Section 4.2. We kind of discovered that inconsistency late today, so that's sort of just an internal consistency issue. Both applicants tonight have expressed that they're in agreement with our version of the covenant, so I believe it's resolved.
Very good. And that was the covenant that was put on our desk before the meeting tonight?
If it's dated yesterday, then yes.
Okay, great. All right, so if we're moving to adopt, we're going to be adopting the resolution with the covenant dated January 10th, 2025?
Correct, with a minor consistency revision that I just mentioned.
I have a question.
Please.
Mayor Singer, so I have a question for Ms. Miskel. So you and I had a conversation at maybe, I don't know, maybe 4 o'clock, 3:45, that you wanted to wait on the covenant because there were still pending issues.
Thank you, yes. As a matter of fact, and Mike Marshall had to leave, he's-
I need to make sure that we're approving the right thing.
Yeah. We recognize that this was a negotiation in addition to, you know, a varying number of views here. And while it is not perfect, we are, we find it acceptable with the revision that Mr. Shad said today. So we're prepared to move forward. It isn't perfect and if there are problems in the future, we have enough confidence in our council that we can come back and work with you to make revisions if necessary.
Follow-up? So just so that I'm clear, because we had a conversation-
Yes, I understand.
-not even five hours ago or whatever time it is, and you said we were going to postpone all the covenants on both projects and then figure it out later, so that is not correct.
Probably 30 minutes after we spoke, actually. We were able to get confirmation that the revision we needed was fine, so-
Okay. And then my other question is, I guess this is a question for staff, is have we talked to all the, because obviously this covenant, we're talking about Mass Mutual, but this covenant is other projects as well are involved, so.
Sure. As I mentioned yesterday, we've been working with representatives of all of the CIMD projects for approximately three, three to four months, I guess it is. At various stages, we had believed that everybody was in agreement and the new issues continued to be brought up. As of today, I believe everyone is in agreement.
Okay, just making sure that we clarify that for me.
And Mr. Marshall gave me permission to tell you that he also agrees with what Brandon just said.
Okay.
Okay, just making sure that I've got all my data correct since I changed in the last few hours. Thank you for the clarification.
Just a quick one. I have three things on my desk that are all dated February 10th. Is it the one that says in red, staff revised February 10th?
Yes.
Because there's, okay, that's the one in red?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
A question for Ms. Nackless. I had two. Both said staff revised February 10, 2025. One clean, one red line. What is your third?
The one yesterday.
From yesterday.
Oh, yesterday one. Okay, thank you. All right. Further questions, Mr. Wigder?
Staff revised, staff revised, all dated February 10th.
Yes, I have read everything, including the revision of today. Mr. Shad, I know it's very difficult working with so many partners at the same time, but I would like to thank you and commend you for putting it all together, simplifying the declaration to this point. I agree with, Ms. Miskel, it's not perfect, but it is, it is much more streamlined than the initial, initial version, so I appreciate the changes and the hard work and I'm prepared to support it at this time. Thank you.
All right. Further questions from Mr. Millage or staff? All right, seeing none, we'll continue with the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Last call for anyone else on this matter. Mr. Millage, you have a chance for summation. If you want it, you are indicating that you are waiving your summation, so that will conclude the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 14-2025 with the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions dated staff revised February 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I don't think we'll have any tonight because we've had a lot before on this matter. Then Ms. Sidens, please call the poll.
Nackless?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Very well. We'll now proceed to Resolution 18-2025 and Ms. Sidens, would you please read that title?
Resolution 18-2025, a resolution of the City of Boca Raton considering for the approximately 28.89 acre property generally located at 6,600 North Military Trail, an amendment to an approved site plan, planning and zoning board resolution Number 08-20, for a commercial industrial multifamily development, CIMD, construction of which will be in four phases, to include in phase one, the demolition of 245,983 square feet of office; in phase two, the construction of 42,840 square feet of commercial retail and restaurant use; in phase three, the construction of a 36,396 square foot fitness and wellness facility; in phase four, the construction of an eight-story, 500-unit multifamily residential building, inclusive of 10% affordable housing units with all non-residential uses expressly conditioned upon the timely completion of phase four and related site improvements, including the installation of walkways and landscaping, together with a technical deviation from Section 28-1655 Code of Ordinances to temporarily reduce the number of required parking spaces from 1,166 spaces to 1,160 spaces, a reduction of six spaces during phases one, two, and three, considering the abandonment of multiple portions to 20-foot and 132-foot of a utility easement, providing for a peeler, providing an effective date.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaler, can you confirm that the quasi-judicial procedure you read shortly ago governs this public hearing as well?
I can confirm.
Thank you. At this point, we'll ask councilmembers if you have any ex parte communications you wish to disclose on this matter. I'll start on my right this time with Mr. Wigder.
Yes, I've had multiple conversations with the related group partners, Andrew Chesnik, and obviously with counsel to the, with counsel to the applicant on multiple occasions over the last several years as well.
All right, thank you. Ms. Drucker?
The same as Mr. Wigder. I've had multiple conversations. I've had multiple meetings with the attorney for, for the Office Depot, with Ian Weiner, Andrew Chesnik, with, you know, Bonnie's Miskel Group. I had a conversation with Andrew Chesnik this afternoon, today, as of late afternoon, and everything else is on emails and are in the file already.
Thank you, Ms. Nackless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I've had conversations with Ian Weiner, Eric Cochran, Bonnie Miskel, Andrew Chesnik, and John at the Nudgeon.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I've had discussions with Bonnie Miskel and just a few minutes ago with Andrew Chesnik. I believe that's it.
All right, thank you. And I've had discussions going back more than two years with the following: Ian Weiner, Isaac Toladano, Jorge Perez, John Paul Perez, Bonnie Miskel, Andrew Chesnik. Were you indicating? No. No, please, help me out.
Oh, no, I was just saying the clock is going on the-
Oh, that's fine. We'll fix the clock. I have not talked to the clock. And Bonnie Miskel, I believe David Millage as well. And I think that concludes my ex parte communications. I have been by at the site, as I'm sure all of us have. And please.
Mayor Singer, I forgot David Millage, the attorney, is at Bonnie and Eric Cochran, and I might have had a conversation possibly with George Perez. It might be on the calendar if they were at a meeting, but just making sure, even if I didn't, it's just on the record.
Thank you.
Just a lot of people.
I don't call him Mr. Cochran, but I might have as well. Please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I echo those sentiments. My recollection is perhaps multiple years ago I had conversations with Mr. Perez and his brother and the other people you said.
Very good. Everyone's unnoticed that we may have spoken to all of the people aforementioned. So please take that into consideration if you speak, because at this point, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise so the clerk can administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather Waldstein, senior planner with Development Services will make the presentation.
Ms. Waldstein?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Heather Waldstein, senior planner with Development Services, and I will be presenting this project tonight. The project is located at 6,600 North Military Trail. It's at the southeast corner of Clintmore Road and Military Trail. The 28.89 acre property has a planned mobility future land use designation and is within the LERP zoning district. The property is surrounded by similar zoning with multifamily, commercial, retail, and restaurant uses. The applicant is requesting to amend a previously approved site plan that authorized development of the existing Office Depot world headquarters and associated parking structures for redevelopment as a CIMD. The CIMD will bring 500 new multifamily residential units, inclusive of 10% affordable, a new nearly 37,000 square foot fitness and wellness facility, and approximately 43,000 square feet of new retail and restaurant spaces. In order to develop the CIMD, a third of the existing office space will be demolished, maintaining approximately 400,000 square feet of the office space and the associated parking structures. In addition to the CIMD request, the applicant is asking for a technical deviation for the temporary reduction of approximately six parking spaces during construction of the first three phases of development. And last, a portion of a utility easement will be abandoned. If approved, this project would authorize 500 of the 2,500 unit bank permitted for CIMD citywide. The intent and purpose of the CIMD is the development of affordable housing, and this project provides the minimum required 10% affordable units. It meets the location criteria and it's consistent with the land use regulations. The proposed site plan will be developed in four phases. Demolition of approximately a third of the existing office building will occur in phase one, followed by development of the retail restaurant component located along North Military Trail. That's shown in the blue shading with over 40,000 square feet of retail and restaurant and four single-story buildings. The third phase of development will consist of construction of the fitness and wellness facility taking the place of the demolished office space. Finally, the fourth phase will complete the project with construction of the 500 residential dwelling units. During the first three phases, the existing north parking structure will be available as well as surface parking spaces which are identified in the blue shading at the center of the screen. And this will serve the existing office space that's going to be remaining, the retail restaurant space, and the fitness and wellness facility. Once the residential building is complete, the existing south parking garage will be operational and all provided parking spaces onsite will be available. There are four access points, three along Military Trail and one on Clintmore Road. The middle access on Military is signalized while the others are all right in, right out. There are two vehicular access, vehicular cross-access and one pedestrian cross-access, which leads me to my next slide. The proposed pedestrian circulation and access consist of an internal walkway system and private multi-use path. Both are existing and both will be connected to the multi-use, sorry, multifamily building. In addition, the project will improve and widen an eight-foot sidewalk along Military Trail connecting to the south and will also replace the existing bus shelter. These next two slides are 2D elevations of the multifamily building. The 500 residential units have a unit mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units arranged on eight floors with access via an elevator. The one-bedrooms make up 44% of the unit count, while 41% accounts for the two-bedroom units and 15% for the three-bedroom units. The affordable unit mix is proportional to the market rate units. The first floor consists of the residential lobby with direct connection to the south parking garage- parking garage, indoor and outdoor amenities, including a pool and pool deck and dog run area. The remainder of the first floor includes residential units. Both the north and south elevations are internal to the site, with the south elevation visible from the LWDD easement area and the property to the south. I've noted the maximum 85-foot height to the top of the roof, with a parapet extending an additional five feet, and ornamental features an additional 10 feet. The east elevation is seen from the golf course, while the west elevation is seen from Military Trail. These residential renderings provide a better visualization of the buildings and are provided from viewpoints along Military Trail and the east property boundary along the golf course. The project includes an approximately 37,000 square foot fitness and wellness facility, which will be built in the location of the demolished office space. The fitness and wellness facility includes an outdoor pool and pool house along the west elevation of the building. The non-residential component includes approximately 43,000 square feet of retail restaurant space within four single-story, 26-feet-in-height buildings that front Military Trail. During the analysis of this application, staff found that the project will provide additional 500 rental dwelling units in the city, which is inclusive of 10% of affordable housing units. The project is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses, surrounded to the west with multifamily residential, the north with retail, and to the south with mixed-use residential commercial. Staff found that the project, as designed, supports goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan related to pedestrian, bicycle, and transit mobility, and the project complies with all applicable code requirements, with the exception of a request for a technical deviation due to temporarily reduce parking during phases one through three of the project. Since the January 2, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the applicant requested modifications to specific conditions of approval regarding the timing of construction improvements. The project includes, sorry, the packet includes a black line version of the resolution with shaded double-strike-through and double-underlined text, as well as a clean version accepting the requested revisions. However, since the publication of tonight's agenda, the applicant requested additional changes, which are reflected in the black line version provided on the dais. These changes also incorporate timing and sequencing changes. With the exception of condition number 8H7, which relates to provided parking within the LWDD easement, this is also reflected on the substitute site plan that was provided to you this evening, and will be included in the plan set as Exhibit A. At its November 19, 2024 meeting, the Community Apairance Board unanimously recommended approval, including a condition to have the elevations updated to substantially match the renderings, and the applicant has updated their elevations to match the renderings. At the January 2, 2025 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted 5-0, recommending approval of the site plan amendment for a commercial industrial multifamily development, and the Development Services Department recommends approval of the site plan amendment for a C-I-M-D. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. I'll start off, please. You said on page 20, I guess it's line four, it was Section 8A Romanets, or it's 8C Romanets 7? You distinguish that? What's the difference with that particular change?
So the original site plan that was provided as part of the plan set showed 46 parking spaces, but the site plan has been corrected to show 48, so that's just noting that change.
Right. But all of the changes in the document that was put before us are agreeable to both the applicant and to staff?
I believe so, unless the applicant has any further comments.
We will ask the applicant when they come up. Could you talk, please, on page 15 about the timing here, what's shaded in gray on page 15, lines 6 through 18, the either-or, please?
This was a request by the applicant regarding the issuance of a demolition permit, so originally the resolution or the conditions called for them to provide an application for building permit for phase two and/or three prior to the issuance of the demolition permit, and the applicant has requested to change that condition to allow them to receive the demolition permit without providing the application for building permits for phase two or three. So we've provided this additional language that states that they have a choice, they can obtain a building permit for phase two or three, and/or three, as previously stated, or they can demonstrate to the city building official that the partial demolition, which is a third of the office building, is in compliance with all National Fire Prevention Association and Florida Building Code requirements. And then, no later than six months after issuance of the demolition permit, they would have to submit their application for building permit for phase two and/or three.
Right. So if I'm hearing you right, that means they can proceed with demolition, they have a defined time in which they have to submit a permit. If they don't do that, and they demolish part of their building, and their building permit for phases two or beyond expire, then they're out of luck. They just tore down part of their own building, and they can't build anything new?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, council members? All right, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Ms. Miskel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm very excited to present this this evening. I'm joined by the owners and the partners and the team. We do have a presentation for you, but it would be redundant. Heather did a great job, and I'd like to thank both Brandon and Heather for their commitment in working on a project that is a little bit more complex than others, because it has a building that is going to exist and not start from scratch. So we recognize the challenge, and I thank you very much for working with us. We only have a couple of just minor cleanup items, and we have discussed this with staff. First of all, referring back to the condition that you were just mentioning, Mayor, the only comment that I have is that it talks about, as one of the options, obtaining a building permit. The prior language said submit a building permit, so we'd just like to make that adjustment. And David can read the full condition, if you'd like, into the record, but the original one said submit a building permit. That's what we'd like to continue with. And then, the only other comment that I have, and I believe it was probably a typo, but on the screen this evening, it talked about an obligation for 51 affordable housing units, and 500 units times 10% is 50. We had corrected that on our data sheets and on our last submittal, so I think that might have been just a typo. That was also discussed at Planning and Zoning Board, so I just want to reflect that in the record, that it's 50, which 500 times 10% would be 50. And other than that, I think we... Do you need us to read the condition into the record, Mr. Mayor, as it relates to the demolition and the timing, or is it clear what we wanted corrected?
No, I'd like to hear, and then I'd like to have staff weigh in.
Okay. David's going to read it in.
So as Ms. Miskel had mentioned, Condition 7A1 and 2 on page 15, it's changing the terminology obtained to submit and diligently pursue. So 7A1 would say, submit and diligently pursue a building permit for phase two and/or phase three, and then 7A2, halfway through, it starts, no later than six months after the receipt of the demolition permit for phase one, submit and diligently pursue a building permit for phase two and/or three.
All right, I'm going to, by the way, before we get to staff, I think the better language would be submit an application for and diligently pursue a building permit?
That would be fine. Thank you.
Right, because you don't submit the permit.
Yes.
Mr. Shad, how do you feel about this?
It's acceptable to staff. As you were mentioning, basically the worst-case scenario is if they demo the part of the building and don't proceed further, then they'll have to clean up the site, you know, make the building look finished before we final that permit, and that'll be the end of the project. So they have six months essentially after pulling the demo permit to submit an application for phase two or three and diligently pursue.
All right. Very good. Questions? Mr. Victor.
No, I agree with the change. I think, if you recall, the requirements to submit for a building permit are substantial. Substantial amount of work will have to be done, a substantial amount of money will have to be spent. So this is something that, it's not that they're going to do all of this extra work, submit for a building permit, and then not go forward. It seems extremely unlikely, so I think the submit an application and diligently pursue are reasonable changes. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Ms. Miskel, a question for you. The fitness facility of the 30-odd thousand square feet, is that open to members of the general public, or only open to employees and residents of this facility?
It will be open to the general public.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
With a membership.
Thank you, yes. I am just leaving off words today, I apologize. It's been a long day. I do not know how you do it.
Love. Love is how we do it. All right, other questions, please?
Just one more question. Are there bicycle parking facilities on this plan?
Bicycle parking.
David Millet, for the record. Yes, there are bicycle facilities, there are bicycle rooms inside the two existing garages, and I believe there's other bike racks around the development.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Ungin?
Jonathan Ungin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I sat down, you look for my acknowledgement, Mutual America. I wanted to speak on this, because after the long night that we've had with the concerned public, I wanted to wait and see if there was anybody that wanted to come up and say they were against this project, or the previous project. And the reality is, there's nobody, again, in this part of town. So I hope that this city acknowledges and realizes that this is the part of town that makes the most sense for dense development. This project couldn't come out of the ground if it wasn't for the existing office building that's staying, and they're building the same amount of units as if they did it across the whole project. So without passing density, it isn't feasible. Both Mutual of America that's doing it, they're doing it, there's not a single PMD or C-I-MD project that hasn't passed density in order to build. There's nobody in this room that's against this project. I'm not against this project. I just think it's stupid. You should invite back Related Ross, let them come and look at this building that we're sitting in, because maybe this building makes the most sense. There would be nobody here that would be against a 15-story, 20-story building like they originally proposed. I'm directly across the street. I'd love to see something meaningful. I'd love to see more growth. I'd love to see more density in an area that has the infrastructure, the roadways, to withstand it. Mutual of America, that park of Broken Sound, you can literally, you won't see a car driving on it during the workday. During the workday on Congress until PM peak, you won't see hardly any cars. Approve this project, you'll do it real quickly after I leave, but let's look at the future. Let's have this project, if they ever wanted to take down their existing office, let's just say round, phase four came, and they wanted to get rid of their existing office and build residential, because the need and the market and the demand called it. They couldn't do it, because they passed all their density. So the reality is, let's look at a city at smart development, where there's nobody against anything you do in this part of town. Time after time after time, this happens. Time after time, I get up to speak and to make these points, and I just feel like it falls on deaf ears, that you continue to play the charade of passing density in order to make this happen, and not look at the true units per acre, and make a change in the future that's beneficial for this future's growth, and especially this part of town. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? And you were sworn, Mr. Caicedo, right?
Yes, I was.
Thank you.
Juan Caicedo, 5560 Northeast 7th Avenue. I have no personal gain on the project, however, I was the designer behind the work. And I think that I'm here actually just to praise the developers, and Pabent Enterprises and Related, for taking this design and really working with me on the design of this project to really make it an exceptional project. And I'm here standing in front of you, because I want you to, when you look at projects like these, when we do projects, develop projects, we have to look at the architecture. What is produced in terms of the architecture, we have an impact on the community. And I applaud them for permitting me to work on it, and allowing the design to continue the way we originally conceived it. And I think it's important for you guys, when you look at these projects, to look at what's being produced in terms of the architecture, to see if it's really going to have a positive impact on our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, last call for someone to speak first. Would anyone who spoke like to cross-examine anyone else? All right, seeing none, then we'll give the applicant an opportunity for summation.
Just wanted to again thank staff and the board. I think this is going to be a great multifamily project, multiple-use project. I think it's well-located, and it's backed by two great developers, Pabent and Related. So thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 18-2025 with the proposed changes as provided on the dais, with the ones read into the record by Ms. Miskel about the 7A and the language about application, and also the correct noting of the 50 units under the 10%. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved. And then I'll tell Mr. Thompson on the second, then.
Second.
Any further discussion? Right? Then Ms. Sidens, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Nackless?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. And I know it's been a long night, and we still have another couple of items, but I'm going to suggest another brief recess. So yes, we'll reset, we'll come back in 10 minutes, so, thank you all. So, thank you all.
And we are resuming our city council regular meeting at the time of 9:59 and we will proceed now to item 12, regular public hearings. And Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title of ordinance 5719? And this is the second of two public hearings on this matter.
Ordinance number 5719, an ordinance of the City of Boca Raton amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to redesignate the approximately 124.21 acre Boca Raton Innovation Campus Brick property, generally located at 5,000 T-Rex Avenue from Plan Mobility, PM, to Enhanced Mobility, EM, providing for revisions to the future land use map, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Begovic, Senior Planner with Development Services, will make the presentation on ordinance number 5719.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, Peter Begovic, Senior Planner for Development Services. Tonight I'll be presenting the future land use map amendment for the Boca Raton Innovation Campus. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a future land use map, or FLUM amendment, to change the future land use designation for the 124.21 acre Boca Raton Innovation Campus from Plan Mobility to Enhanced Mobility, or EM. The property is generally located south of Yamato Road, north of Spanish River Boulevard, and east of Broken Sound Boulevard. In late 2021, the city council held two roundtable discussions that included representatives of the Boca Raton Innovation Campus seeking direction on code changes to facilitate the property's redevelopment. The roundtable led to a collaboration between BRIC staff on city-initiated comprehensive plan and code of ordinances amendments. In October 2023, the city council created the EM future land use category and established a new type of plan development called Enhanced Mobility Development, or EMD. Properties eligible for development as an EMD are those that are a minimum of 100 acres in size and designated EM on the future land use map, are Zoned Light Industrial Research Park, or LERP, and are at least partially located within a half a mile of the Boca Raton Tri-Rail Station. An EMD master plan approval would allow for more uses than would be allowed under the standard LERP zoning district. Compared to the current PM future land use category, the EM future land use category will enable the applicant and others to pursue approval for an EMD while reducing the maximum potential residential density from 20 units to 10 units an acre. The EM designation will also continue to allow the property to develop workforce and affordable housing as a commercial industrial multifamily development, or CIMD, due to ordinance number 5722, which was adopted on January 14, 2025. The maximum floor area ratio of 0.85 is also maintained when properties designated EM receive approval for an EMD. Staff has reviewed the proposed future land use change regarding three things: consistency with the comprehensive plan and city code, compatibility with surrounding future land use and development, and availability of public services to the subject property, also known as a concurrency evaluation. Staff found that the proposed FLUM amendment from PM to EM is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code, and notes that EM is a compatible transition between the PM, residential medium, and public institutional future land use designations adjacent to the property. Staff evaluated the demand for public services generated by the maximum possible intensity of uses allowed in the EM future land use designation, and found that the property will be adequately served by public facilities and will not negatively impact the regional roadway network, public school facilities, or natural resources. This is a look at the impact of the proposed FLUM amendment on the actual future land use map. During analysis of the application, staff found that the proposed FLUM amendment is consistent with the city charter. Approval of the proposed amendment to the city's adopted FLUM is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed FLUM designation of EM is compatible with the surrounding PM, institutional, and residential medium future land use designations. The proposed amendment is consistent with all other elements of the plan previously adopted, and is based upon the unique circumstances applicable to the property. And the proposed amendment will encourage the redevelopment of BRIC into a vibrant mixed-use project through the regulatory framework provided by the Enhanced Mobility Development Code and comprehensive plan amendments approved in 2023. At their November 7, 2024, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the FLUM amendment. At its December 10 meeting, the city council voted 5-0 to transmit the application to the state. And on January 11, 2025, an expedited review by the state of Florida was completed, and the state had no comment. And Development Services Department recommends approval of the future land use map amendment. That completes my presentation.
Thank you, council members. Any questions? All right, we'll open up the public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Paul Poulsen, 1404 Northwest 48th Street. Good evening and greetings to the Honorable Mayor and Boca City Council members. I come to call you tonight to speak on two different perspectives. One is a Boca resident and homeowner, and the other is a member of the Board of Directors of Centra Homeowners Association. Today I have concerns in each of these capacities, and I want you to know that I've been a Boca Raton homeowner for over 13 years and have worked in Boca for just under 20. My comments will include some facts, perception, and also personal opinion. As a board member of the Homeowners Association, I am concerned by the damages that are likely to be inflicted on myself and my community with your approval of the allowed changes to the plan. For some background, the Centra is 198 townhome community and part of the B-RIC POA that assesses the community dues on an annual basis that are paid quarterly. During the period I have been a homeowner, Centra has paid the B-RIC POA over $1.6 million. The only tangible benefit we receive is a periodic mobile roving security officer. The perception in the community is that we have the most expensive security detail available. The homeowners believe that the anticipated increase in common costs as a result of this project will in turn be passed on to Centra, as is the other common costs. I would also like to note that the community feels it has been neglected by the POA in various ways. Some examples include the POA ignoring the Centra Property Management Company requests for information. As my understanding, even certified mail went unanswered. Additionally, the Homeowners Association bylaws, registered with the state of Florida, indicate the HOA president shall be the association's designated representative on the T-Rex Corporate Center Association POA entitled to vote on all POA matters. That scenario is never allowed to happen. Now, from a more personal perspective, I am concerned as I have been misled in the past by the management at B-RIC. I was invited to attend a presentation when B-RIC was initially looking for Centra's support for future plans. My takeaway that day was that future development was focused on the east side of the campus, thus minimal disruption to any residential areas. My current concern is that the perimeter of the planned area of this amended is 36 yards, more specifically approximately 108 feet from my home's front door. I want to repeat that. 108 feet from my front door. For this city council, it's time to walk the walk. What I mean by that is I routinely receive mailings leading up to elections where the city council candidates indicate they stand up to development. Let this proposed amendment be an example of your position. I heard in previous meeting how the city allowed a developer just up the street from here to renege on their plans for certain development. Well, I want to remind you, the entity bringing these changes tonight are the same ones that played the system a few years ago and took advantage of the city and this council on the Amazon Truck Depot in the same location. Regarding that Amazon Truck Depot, to my knowledge, my community never benefited from that situation. If this project is allowed to run amok, it surely will not be reviewed as a hot ticket to Centra homeowners. I end with the question, do the amendments to the plan specifically benefit the citizens in your constituents of Boca Raton? Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Richard DeWitt, 200 South Andrews Avenue, on behalf of the adjacent property owners Telecom One and Telecom Two. By way of background, I'm born and raised in South Florida, Florida native, but also I'm a veteran of the First Gulf War. With that backdrop, property rights to me are extremely important, and it's my passion in what I do in my practice. But with property rights, they require certain checks and balances. Here, this FLUM amendment needs to be checked. And what I mean by that, this is the quintessential definition of spot zoning. Now, let's look at it. What's allowed in this category? One, it has to be 100 acres. Two, it has to be a half mile from the Tri-Rail Station. And three, it's got to be west of 95. What other property can meet that qualification? Zero. None. None of them can. Now, I'm going to dive into a little of the spot zoning and why it is, but you're also going to hear from our planner, who's the former planning division manager over at City of Hollywood. So, spot zoning. Zoning in accordance with a comp plan promotes the public welfare by providing for an orderly and integrated development process. By definition, therefore, spot zoning is the antithesis of planned zoning. Rezoning of individual tracts of land will be held invalid when not enacted in accordance with a comp plan. A spot zoning challenge involves the examination of the property and why it's only being allowed for one property. Now, the practice of spot zoning is universally condemned across the board, everywhere. And as stated in Alapata versus City of Miami, the law will not and cannot approve a zoning regulation or any government action adversely affecting the rights of others, which is based on no more than the fact that those who support it have the power to work their will. It would constitute spot zoning of the worst order, a practice that we and all other courts have universally condemned. The inclusion of the 100-acre minimum requirement again leaves only one property. That's very important. The rest of the adjacent properties have, they meet the criteria except the 100 acres. So, they're left out in the open. And to go off of the dancing partner analogy, they're left holding all the dance cards and not allowing anybody else to dance like they're at a middle school prom, standing against the wall. So, with that being said, I appreciate your time. We ask that you either table this item and allow staff to go back and look at it, to look at the adjacent properties, or to deny it in its entirety. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Leslie Del Monte with Inspired Placemaking Collective. By way of background, I have over 20 years of architecture and planning experience, with over a decade of that in municipal planning. As I was reminded tonight when your presentation came up, I worked on the downtown West Palm Beach master plan almost 20 years ago. I have extensive experience in activity centers and transit-oriented corridors. While it might not have been the intent, and you've heard the consequences from a legal perspective of the spot zoning, while that might not have been the intent, it is definitely the unintended consequence. The 100-acre requirement, which was added after the land use category was created, makes this the only eligible property. And I'd like to focus on what that means from a planning perspective. It means that every other property between this site and the actual Tri-Rail Station is left out. This basically means that you're not considering an enhanced mobility district, you're considering an isolated island. The enhanced mobility designation was intended to encourage public transit, improve connectivity, and create compact, walkable, mixed-use development. Instead, this site is completely disconnected from the Tri-Rail Station with no meaningful pedestrian access. The issue extends further than that. To put it into context with the projects you discussed earlier, you considered a project with higher density for Plan Mobility that is being proposed for Enhanced Mobility, when by design, the proximity to the Tri-Rail should be that that's the inverse. The proximity to Tri-Rail should render the higher densities. Half of the density, the intended density at 10 dwelling units an acre is the equivalent of a little bit less than a townhouse development. The 10 dwelling units an acre is insufficient to create the critical mass necessary for sustainable mobility, for a sustainable mobility district. Successful transit developments typically require 15 to 30 units an acre. At the same time, with the existing commercial and the existing FAR that's being proposed with this project, you're looking at a ratio of approximately 65 to 34, commercial to residential. When in these types of districts, you're looking actually for the exact inverse. You're looking for additional residential, more residential to commercial. Typically, you need about 1,500 to 2,000 units of residential balance, or to be able to have a successful one block of Main Street. So, put that into perspective. That might not be bad. 10 dwelling units an acre for this property, which is on the perimeter, 20% of it, 36% of it, depending on how you measure it, is within the required distance. It might not be bad for a property on the outskirts. But then you're not looking at the property that is actually within that half-mile radius, that is actually closer in proximity, and that doesn't create an island. So, I would urge you to consider this as a district as a whole, and include all the properties as a comprehensive district in alignment with the city's long-term vision for the Enhanced Mobility District. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of the applicant. And if I could, I'd just like to respond to some of the comments that were made and clarify some things. First of all, for the gentleman who lives in Centra, I believe that his measurements are far from what the distance will be to the proposed master plan, but we're not here tonight to talk about master plan. But I will commit to him, and if he'll give me his business card or contact, the owner will get with him, and we'll go over it, because I think some of the information that he has is incorrect. Also, as to the Amazon Truck Depot, my client had to evict them. They otherwise were allowed, they got a business tax license to do what they were doing, but they were creating a problem for the neighbor. And rather than have a problem with their neighbor, the landlord evicted Amazon. It just took a little time to do that, so I wanted to state that for the record. And then lastly, Mr. DeWitt commented on a few things that I think need to be responded to. First of all, he raised spot zoning. All we are asking for this evening is a comp plan amendment, a map amendment, to go from PM to EM. That's it. We're not rezoning the property. We're not entitling the property with any particular uses or rights at this point. This is merely a comprehensive plan amendment. And there are both second and third DCA cases that are very clear that in order to assert a spot zoning claim, there has to be a rezoning. We are not asking for rezoning tonight. That is not before you. So, that concern is improper at this point. Furthermore, one of his, or his main rationale for claiming that this was a spot zoning, that there was some entitlement that was being given to this applicant that no one else similarly situated would have that same right. And he limited that to his reference to the 100 acres. That 100 acres is not limited to any one parcel. It can be several parcels aggregated. It just happens that this owner has more than 100 acres. But this parcel could be combined, and your code provision that was adopted specifically said you can combine other parcels to achieve 100 acres. And that would include parcels that are across Yamato, that are also within the mileage limitation. So, I want to make that perfectly clear. This is not one parcel, the only parcel that has 100 acres. You can combine and consolidate parcels. And then finally, and most importantly, we've spent a lot of time collaborating with your staff and you in coming up with this EM, land use comprehensive designation, and also the code provisions that run concurrent with that. It was adopted almost a year and a half ago, in October of 2023. If, in fact, his concern is based on the 100 acres and the implementation of the ordinance, there was a time and a place for them to make an appeal. That has long passed, and to raise the concern for the map amendment is also improper. Anyway, we're happy to answer any other questions, and thank you for allowing me some time to respond.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Ungian?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. I wasn't going to speak on this, but this one got too good. So, using the dance analogy, they are a little late to the dance. However, I've been voicing these concerns regarding this project, and this council has done some great things since. So, first off, I want to start off by thanking each and every one of you for removing what I had brought up as spot zoning concerns regarding this. Ms. Miskel makes some good points. This is not, you know, the rezoning. However, I think that, understanding some of the stuff that's happened as of late in this part of town, I think that part of this has to do with the emergency room, obviously. And as a member of the community here, I think that this individual from, I'm assuming Silver Properties, while I have concerns with that and the parking that was given there under the understanding that Silver owns the property and, you know, isn't gonna, you know, I just find that amazing that that variance in parking was approved because one ownership right now parks it a certain way. But I want to say that that emergency room and the ability for somebody to get emergency medical care in this community is needed. I think that it is welcome. I think that any place that you have, you're looking at a population base that's growing, to force them to have to go to Boca Regional or Delray Medical, as opposed to being able to go to an emergency room, like I said, I have issues with what got passed, and that had to do with parking. But I think that the appeal that this city's done doesn't help this city's population. And I think that's what this individual's issue is, because I guess that BRIC has brought some things forward, and it's gotten muddy. But I hate government overreach and restrictions, and I think if it's good for a property that's right next door, it should be good for that other property. And let's make, I've gotten to be a dealmaker and to be a person that wants to help other property owners that I've maybe be adverse to, and I think that this is a situation that could be that. So, that's just my two cents. And I think that we can do better. I don't know if this is the right forum. I think this individual with Centra, I was sitting there going, "Centra, Centra, are you aware of what's going on next door?" Because, you know, this was years ago, though. But I think that, like I said, that dance is over. But let's do right development in the future. Let's provide for the best atmosphere and environment for the community. I think that emergency room, while, like I said, I disagree with certain things on that variance, I think it would be good to have medical treatments close by to where people live. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Last call for the public hearing on ordinance number 5719. All right, we will close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 59, excuse me, 5719. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Nackless. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wigder. Any further discussion? This is a future land use map change. Four votes are required for approval. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Sidens, please.
Singer?
Yes.
Wichter?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Nackless?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes five votes to zero.
Very well. That concludes item 12A, and I will speak slowly because our court reporter... Have you ceased recording?
Yes.
All right, great. If you want to, just come on up here and remove your microphones.
It's not so long. I thought I was going to sit here for the rest of them.
All right. All right, we will resume now with item 13 on our agenda, which is regular public hearings and settlements, of which we have none. So, we'll open the floor to public requests. Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Ungian?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So, the last point I wanted to make tonight was this city's selection and who kind of led this city in that government center initiative. And I just wanted to bring some things to light as a property owner. Because I own a beautiful building. I'm 100% occupied. I've been 100% occupied. I have four offices that are about 100- I have four offices that are about 100 square feet, so if anybody needs a small office, I got a couple. But that's about it in my 60,000-square-foot building. But I wanted to bring up one point, because as the city's looking for a new home, I did just hear sidebar that maybe they're looking at the Johnson Controls Building for a government headquarters, you know, in the time being when this whole process downtown moves. But if it was BRIC, you're going to hear from me again, because I have a major concern with the relationship with BRIC and Jessica Del Vecchio, the Economic Development Manager, who happens to sit on BRIC's board. I've never heard from the city about a new business moving into this town if I have office space. I've also never, ever going on, at least the 15 years that I've been running the building, I've got beautiful office space. Yummy tours I've done for CBRE or any one of their Realtors, in 20, in 15, 20 years, zero, because they tour their own properties, because they get commission on both sides, because CBRE in this part of town charges, in essence, double commission. They get commission not only on rent, but also on CAM, which is my operating expenses. And that's tough to pay somebody on commission on something you're not making money on. And that's what CBRE has done to this part of town. You look at the majority of the for lease signs, which somebody had previously stated, you know, how much open office space there is. Just because there's a for lease sign doesn't mean there's office space. I have a for lease sign in front of my building, and you're not going to find office space. So I don't think that's a good analogy and a reason to say that office isn't doing well. I think it's doing all right. I don't know. I know I am. But like I said, I just, I'm upset that the city selected a partner to, in CBRE, and if they're looking for office space, like I said, I got none, so I got none for the city if they needed it. But I just like a fair, open process, and I am a little upset and scorned, because a CBRE shouldn't be looking out for their own interests. They should be looking out for the interests of their client. And I find it amazing that no CBRE agent has ever reached out about potential office space for their clients, which I believe is their duty and their responsibilities. So I just wanted to let you think about that, going forward with the selection that this city makes for their temporary offices, or maybe a permanent nice building here. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for public requests. That concludes the time for public requests. We'll now turn to item 15, introduction of ordinances. And Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title of ordinance 5724?
Ordinance number 5724, an ordinance of the City of Boca Raton amending the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 budget through the first budget amendment, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance 5724.
Thank you. Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title of ordinance 5725?
Ordinance number 5725, an ordinance of the City of Boca Raton amending the city's comprehensive plan, future land use element policy LU1110, to add private transportation facilities to the list of major semi-public uses as principal permitted uses in the institutional PI, future land use category, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who will introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce ordinance 5725.
Thank you. And Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title of ordinance 5726?
Ordinance number 5726, an ordinance of the City of Boca Raton repealing Chapter Seven Code of Ordances in its entirety, adopting a new Chapter Seven Code of Ordances, adopting the Florida Fire Prevention Code, providing for local amendments to the Florida Fire Prevention Code, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing for codification, providing an effective date.
Thank you. And who will introduce this ordinance?
Mayor, I will introduce ordinance number 5726.
Thank you very much. That concludes our introduction of ordinances tonight. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings for variances or appeals. So we'll turn to city manager reports and recommendations. Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm advising the council that pursuant to requests from Delray Beach Fire Rescue for participation in the Delray Beach Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. We plan to do what we have done in past years, which is provide a ladder and staff to participate in the parade.
Do you need any further action?
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you.
No further report.
Thank you. Mr. Kahler, with your city attorney report.
No report.
Thank you. Council member boards, I'll start on my right with Mr. Wigder, please.
Nothing other than to say thank you. Thank you to everyone, my colleagues, the staff, Mr. Brown, Mr. Kasek, Mr. Kahler, everyone else for all the hard work to get to this point tonight and the long hours. Very, very much appreciated over the very many, many, many months of hard work to get to this point. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
The same, thank you to staff, thank you for everyone, thank you for the community that's been providing feedback, even as we sit here, emails are coming through. So thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Nackliss?
Just say I agree with my colleagues, thank you to everyone for all the hard work that was put into tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
No report, thank you.
I will thank my colleagues, my five, four fellow electeds, your comments today and your thought-out commentary, I think was very helpful to me, to each other, and to the residents as we try to go forward and look at what we're doing. Thank you to our staff, our professionals, our potential partners, and everyone who wants to be part of our great, great city. Again, we will have a open house on this matter next Wednesday evening. And with that, I will conclude my report, and if there's no further business to come before us, we adjourn at 10:33. Thank you, and good evening.